Okay, we can call the meeting to order. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we call the roll, I'd like to welcome the newest Commissioner to the Board, Mr. Stephen Onstock, who resides in Santa Paula, appointed to replace departing Commissioner Bill Bartels. Steve's been appointed by Supervisor Long. Just very briefly, he brings, he's a fifth-generation Ventura County farming resident, resident involved in the ag community. He also practices law in Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Ventura, has so for the past thirty-two years approximately. Supervisor, excuse me, Commissioner Onstock will be sworn in later this, I believe, later this week, and will be a sitting voting Board Member when we get back together, whether it's this month. I don't know when we have our next meeting, but Steve, we welcome you aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome. Comments?
Well, just, you have a large set of shoes to fill with both Laura and Bill Bartels sitting in that seat for almost as long as I sat here.
If I can ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Leo Molitor.
Here.
Commissioner Norrie Dukas.
Here.
Chair Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Westner.
Present.
Commissioner Stephen Onstock.
This is a timely agenda where we normally have time available for public comments on any items that are not on the agenda. I have no Speaker cards, and I see no hands coming up, so moving on to item five, approval of the April 12th, two thousand and nine minutes, comments?
Chair Rodriguez, are we doing the April 12th or the February 12th first?
I'm sorry, my apologies.
Okay.
February 12th.
Yes, then, I have a comment. Would you refer to your agenda, page seven, under the top, item B? When I introduced the question about site visits, and Mr. Quong answered the question, I would like, if possible, with his concurrence, to somehow state what his answer was. And this is what I thought he said, or this is what I implied, that individual commissioners may visit sites, and doing so does not violate the Brown Act, but the visit should be disclosed. Is that basically meet with your concurrence, counsel?
I don't have any notes of my answer on February 12th. I recall the question, and I recall that you had stated that you have recently gone to an ethics training, and that you were told at that ethics training that individual site visits were illegal.
Correct.
I think that was for your terms. I don't recall my exact answer, so I cannot concur with that, but that's the whole reason for this morning's presentation. Later on this morning, when I will answer the question of individual site visits, as well as the receipt and collection of information and evidence outside of the public hearing.
Good.
So your question will be answered in full, and it would probably be best to do it that way as opposed to amend simply the minutes of a board meeting.
And then your comments will be part of the official record?
Yes, it will.
Good. Thank you very much, counsel.
There are motions on the minutes?
I move to approve the February 12 minutes.
Second.
I will have to abstain since I wasn't here that day.
And I'll have to abstain also. Yeah. Well, because he wasn't here either.
Right.
You need three affirmative votes to approve anything, so you don't have...
And we never will.
We never will, right.
Okay, moving on, item six, approval of the February 26th, two thousand and nine minutes. Comments?
Move for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item seven, approval of March 19th, two thousand and nine minutes.
Move approval?
That's second.
I have to abstain. Do the only two.
Same problem.
Same problem, yes.
Actually, the question of counsel, since there wasn't a full quorum of the commission at that time, no actions were taken or minutes necessary to approve. Since it would only be a receiving... Yeah, just as a receiving file, because no actions taken.
Okay. Lastly, approval of the April 2nd, two thousand and nine minutes.
Move approval?
That was second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we now move, I guess we go ahead and move to the training portion of the agenda. Is that right, Kim?
Yes, that's correct. Just for my opening remarks, this training workshop for the Ventura County Planning Commission, we've also invited members of the municipal advisory councils, as well as staff from board offices, to attend the training. These are things that both the Planning Commission has asked to be brought back, and items that we thought would be informational, especially in light of a new planning commissioner. We wanted to go over the oil and gas production in Ventura County. That will be the first presentation, followed by a little bit of our regulatory framework, the zoning ordinances, the general plan. And then we want to show you a little demonstration of our GIS, how we go about looking at permits that are filed with the county. And then our Get to Excellence program, we want to show you the highlights of that, the hard work that we have been doing, and all the county agencies have been doing on that staff, on that project, and the progress that we are making on that. And that will be finalized by a presentation by Mr. Quong from the legal matters for the Ventura County Planning Commissioners, so we're going to talk about due process, the Brown Act, and any sort of conflicts of interest. And then we'll follow that by a presentation for Mr. Bill Bartels, and then followed by lunch. So all in all, it's stacking up to be a good day, so we're going to start out with Katie.
Good morning. I'm Katie Matchin. I am an intern here in the Planning Division, and I'm going to be giving you an overview of oil and gas production in the county. And I'd like to start out by saying that while I've learned a lot about this, I am by no means an expert on the subject, but we do have an expert here today, Steve Fields, from the California Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources, or DOGAR. So he's also going to be able to answer any questions that are a little bit more technical that I might not be able to answer for you. So I want to start out with just talking a little bit about the basics of oil and gas production. As you can see, there are several different steps in the process. The first step is permitting, and of course, that's the step that Ventura County is probably most closely involved with. But we also, over the course of production, go out and make sure that the different facilities are in compliance with their permit conditions, and then we would respond to any complaints as they come up on an as-needed basis. And at the bottom of this slide, you can see there's a picture of a typical oil and gas reservoir, just to give you an idea of what you might see underground at a well site. And so you can see there's lots of different layers of items and materials within this reservoir, so you can actually get gas, oil, and water out of the same reservoir. So now I'd like to talk a little bit about the history of oil and gas production in the county. And that began in the eighteen-sixties, the first discoveries on Sulphur Mountain. And through the turn of the century, there were several other early oil discoveries in that general area. And over the first part of the twentieth century, that drew a lot of new residents into Ventura County, and there was quite a lot of production in the county at that time. Just about that time, the State of California decided it was time to start regulating oil and gas production. As you can see from this picture, it was a little bit haphazard in the early days, and so the state felt that it would be appropriate to start some regulations of oil and gas production. And the county, during the Depression, oil production slowed down quite a bit, but it did increase during World War II, and then thereafter, and it peaked in nineteen fifty-four. And just after that, the last major oil field was discovered in the county. And since then, there's been a general decline in oil production throughout Ventura County. And in the early sixties, offshore oil exploration began in the county. And I'd like to talk just a little bit about offshore production. Now, offshore production is outside of the direct jurisdiction of the County of Ventura, but it is regulated by state and federal agencies, and it is, there's quite a lot of offshore production off of the coastline, so I want to let you know what's going on out there. So there are actually two areas that are regulated. The first is the Federal Outer Continental Shelf, or OCS, and that's the area that's between three and two hundred miles off the shore. It's regulated by the Department of the Interior, and the California Coastal Commission also reviews activities within that area. So the Department of Interior issues leases that are for between five and ten years, and they're sold according to a schedule that's developed by the Secretary of the Interior. Right now, we have fourteen developed leases within the region, and I'll show you where those are in a moment, and ten of those have actively producing wells. And the second area is the area from the coastline to up to three miles offshore, and that's the California State Tied and Submerged Lands. And that's regulated by the California State Lands Commission and the California Coastal Commission. So most of the leases in that area were actually issued in the nineteen fifties, and in fact, the nineteen ninety-four California Coastal Sanctuary Act restricts the issuance of any new leases in this area, so there are no leases being issued at this time. But there are seven existing leases within the coast off of Ventura County, and five of those have producing wells. And the production actually happens on onshore facilities within this area. So this is a map just of the OCS facilities in Ventura County, and also in Santa Barbara County, so you can see that there's quite a number of platforms off of our coast. And this is what a typical platform might look like. These are really big structures. And in fact, there's one off of Santa Barbara County that I believe is the largest man-made steel structure in the world. These can accommodate up to a hundred wells, and there's eleven active platforms just off the Ventura County coast. And these are some pictures of what those look like in real life. So once materials have been pumped from these platforms, they're transported back to shore, either by pipeline or by a barge or tanker, and there are four processing plants on our coast. And those are the Carpinteria Facility, La Conchita, and then the Rincon and Mandalay Facilities are also just off the coast. So onshore production is something that Ventura County does have direct jurisdiction over, is also regulated by DOGAR. It's allowed in open space, industrial, and some agricultural and rural residential zones, and it requires a conditional use permit. And there's also minimum bonding requirements. The minimum bond is ten thousand dollars. In some cases, we've negotiated a higher bond for projects that have a lot of wells or special circumstances, but about seventy percent of the bonds that we hold right now are for ten thousand dollars. And then in addition to that, there's a minimum liability insurance requirement for each of these permits. Now, once an operator has a permit, anytime they go back and do some sort of activity like drilling a well, they would need to get a zoning clearance, and as part of that zoning clearance process, they would need to demonstrate that they're in compliance with the bonding and insurance requirements. Now, in addition to the permits that Ventura County issues, DOGAR also issues permits for pretty much any activity that you might have associated with oil or gas production, so things like drilling a new well, changing the kinds of equipment that you have at your well, or plugging in a abandoned site. And those permits are issued for only about a year. They can be extended for an additional year. And DOGAR also has bonding requirements for well operations. So right now, there are about a hundred thirty active CUPs in the county, and those are generally in the south-central region of the county. I'll show you a map in just a moment of where those are. Most of them are issued before nineteen seventy. Those permits have very large boundaries. They don't have a lot of permit conditions, and most of them don't expire. Whereas the ones that were issued after nineteen seventy generally have smaller boundaries. They can have a lot of permit conditions, and those are generally issued for twenty to fifty years. So there's about thirty permits that have been issued since nineteen seventy. In December of nineteen ninety, the Board of Supervisors adopted new standard conditions for oil and gas production, and you have a copy of those, I believe it's Exhibit Five, in your agenda, and if you want to take a look at them. There have been five permits issued since those were adopted, so most of the permits right now don't necessarily have those exact conditions. And this is a map that just gives you an idea of where the CUPs are within the county right now, so you can see that there are some that are quite large, and those would be the older permits. And the smaller permits would be the newer permits. And this map actually shows you where the active and the abandoned wells are within the county. See, the pink dots are the active wells. You can kind of see where the current activity is happening. There's about twenty-six hundred active wells in the county right now. About a hundred have been drilled in the last decade. And right now, there are forty-five oil and gas production operators within the county, but there are three major operators that control about half of the wells in the county, so they're responsible for most of the production in the county right now. So this map shows the wells that have been drilled just since nineteen ninety-five, so it can give you a sense of where the most recent activity is happening within Ventura County. So you can see just north of Ventura, that's the Ventura Field, I believe, has had a lot of activity in the last ten or so years. So just to give you a sense of what oil production levels have looked like over the last couple decades, as I said earlier, the peak oil production was in nineteen fifty-four, and there were forty-nine million barrels produced that year. Last year, there were seven point five million barrels produced. So, a lot less, but still, a considerable amount of oil is being produced within the county. And going forward into the future, we expect that there'll be about a four percent annual decrease in oil production, and you can kind of anticipate that from the graph that I show right there. There are thirty-four fields that are actively producing oil right now, and these are the five that are the most productive as of last year. And the story with gas production is pretty similar. It's also declining over time. There are only twenty-seven fields that are actively producing gas right now, and these are the five most productive, and they're generally the same fields that are the most productive gas fields. And just, so you can have a sense of where those fields are, this is a map that shows last year's oil production levels, and so the very dark red are the fields that are the most productive, and then the lighter colors are not producing as much oil. So you can see again just that that field that's just north of Ventura is probably one of the most productive fields in the county. So I want to give you an idea of just some of the different kinds of equipment and production operations that happen. So, as I said, drilling is one of the first steps in the process, and this is what a typical drilling rig might look like. And right now, a lot of the drilling is actually re-drilling of old wells, and that generally takes between twenty and forty-five days. And these rigs can be pretty tall, up to a hundred eighty feet. And once they've actually drilled the well, a workover rig is put in place, and that rig is smaller, it's only about sixty feet tall. There's generally less equipment associated with that well, and they stay in place for a much shorter period of time, only about two weeks. What they do is install the permanent pumping equipment at the site. So this is a picture of the typical kind of pumping unit that you would see in Ventura County. I'm sure you've seen one of these out there somewhere. And this is a beam-type unit, and you can see what a typical well might look like with one of these units at the top, at the surface, and then the well extending into the ground beneath it. But there are some other kinds of techniques that are used for pumping within the county, and one of them is this DynaPump unit that I have a picture of. So you can see that it's probably taller than a beam unit, but it is a little less bulky in some ways. These are not particularly effective in very deep wells, and since a lot of the wells within Ventura County are very deep, you're not going to see a lot of this type of unit within the county. And another technique that's used is steam-assisted gravity drainage. So that's used right now in some locations, it may become more prominent in the future. And there's a picture of it right there, you can see that what happens is a steam generator is installed adjacent to the well site. It generates steam, and then injects it into the ground, and that forces the oil up out of the well. So it's a little bit more equipment, and a little bit of noise associated with that. So I want to just conclude by talking about some of the future programs that DOGAR is actually working on, and Steve may have some more things to add on these. Right now, DOGAR is developing new maintenance standards for oil and gas facilities statewide. So these include things like minimum standards for leak detection, maintenance, inspection. And DOGAR is going to be going out and inspecting facilities to ensure that they comply with all of these new conditions. And they expect that they will adopt these new standards in the next probably couple months. And another interesting program that DOGAR is working on statewide is a remediation of orphaned facilities. So an orphaned facility is a tank or some other kind of equipment that has been left by the operator. The operator is nowhere to be found, and it's just sitting there, becoming kind of a nuisance. You can see, these are not the most attractive pieces of equipment to have on your property. So DOGAR is going to be going out and disposing of this equipment, any fluids that are associated with them, recycling the metals, if that's possible. And in Ventura County, we have seven different locations with orphaned facilities, and that includes thirty-four different tanks. Four of those actually have fluid in them. And the cost to remediate all of these facilities is expected to be about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. This can be potentially funded entirely by DOGAR. However, if the county does hold any bond money that's associated with any of these sites, we would be expected to contribute that money. If we don't, and we're still working that out, then DOGAR could fund the entire program. And they expect, they haven't actually started, I believe, in Ventura County, but they expect that that would be completed by twenty fourteen. And that's all I have, but if you have any questions, I or Steve can help answer them.
Questions, the Speaker?
If I have a hundred and twenty acres of property in open space or farming, who owns the oil under my property?
I think that that would depend on who had been granted the mineral rights, and it may be the property owner, but as I understand it, it may be someone else. So that crashes everyone else's understanding, so I think it would vary from property to property.
But I could pretty much assume that all the mineral rights in all our land is pretty much owned by somebody else already?
I imagine that it probably is at this point, but I don't know for sure.
And my other question may be answered by from oil and gas, and that is, we're also very concerned about spills, offshore spills. And I'm just wondering, I know they do risk factors. I'm just wondering what the risk factor is of an offshore spill? And I don't expect you to be able to answer that, but maybe later that could be answered. Thank you.
Can you?
I can't answer that either.
Steve said, I've heard that it's fairly low, and there are a lot of mechanisms in place to prevent that, but I'm not an expert in offshore production, no.
Okay, but again, I'm assuming in planning, and when you set up an offshore platform, that you are anticipating the probability of a spill and the risk, but you... All right.
The Planning Department doesn't regulate offshore?
No, 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 I know, but I'm just wondering. That's okay. If nobody can answer that, because that's the big fear of additional offshore. This is the boogeyman that keeps coming up and saying, "Well, if you build more offshore, you're going to have more spills, like the Santa Barbara spill and so forth." And I was just wondering what the risk factor is in that. How probable is that to happen? And I know it can vary with climate and everything else and weather. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Commissioner Dukas?
Who's performing the work on that, on those orphaned facilities? As I bike through certain areas, I notice there's a lot of, what you would call, orphaned facilities, the tanks and whatnot. Who's performing that remediation?
That would be DOGAR that's going to be doing that work, and they may have started it already. I was under the impression that I hadn't actually started in Ventura County, so if you're seeing anyone out there, Steve, are they...
No, I just...
Okay.
I'm Steve Fields, I'm with the State of California Division of Oil and Gas and Geothermal Resources. The orphaned facilities, we are funded by an assessment on oil and gas production, and as part of our budget, we have put in our budget monies to take care of orphaned facilities. And so, basically, we pay for it. We have asked Ventura County if they have a bond to contribute, but we pay for it through the assessment of oil and gas. Just a little bit of background on the orphaned facility. The orphaned facility, like many of our programs, started here in Ventura County. There is a facility on Fifth Street, just right outside the city limits of Oxnard, right on the Amtrak, and so it was seen by a lot of people. We took it upon ourselves to maybe bend the rules a little bit to get that facility, to get that facility taken out. We were surprised how much it did cost. It was very little. It cost us a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we took that up facility, and then we started thinking, how many facilities are there statewide? Well, everybody, you know, we talked to people, and they said, "Oh, there must be thousands of them." We didn't find very many of them. Like you said, there are thirty-four here... We didn't find very many of them, like she said, the thirty-four here in Ventura County. We have actually started removing them. We have thirty-four tanks at the beginning. We have removed right around sixteen already. We finished taking out five last week. We will complete five more, they're doing the work today. We did a contractor walkthrough yesterday to take out about five more. And so, we're moving forward. It was, it was a goal of ours to get rid of all the orphaned facilities at the timeline that she said, but we're moving forward faster than we ever thought we would. So, it's completely funded by assessment on oil and gas, no taxpayer money, no nothing.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Wilson, I'm sure you asked that?
What is a facility consisting of...
A facility consists of, okay, you have wells, and when they produce those wells, they go into tanks, and where they separate the oil and gas and the water, that's what we're talking about. And these facilities are integrated and associated with oil and gas production. Unfortunately, not the site out there in Ventura Avenue, the old Petrochemical site, that's not ours. So that's the facilities that we're talking about.
Does this include sumps, old sumps?
It may include old sumps. We haven't really identified old production sumps here. There are some drilling sumps that have long been covered over, but normally, we don't deal with those, that's Regional Water Quality, Regional Water Quality Control Board deals with those.
When you say there's seven sites and maybe thirty-four facilities, not that I have any peculiar knowledge in this, but I have some knowledge of the backcountry in Sespe and Santa Paula and South Mountain, and I know there are lots and lots of abandoned facilities, sumps, or tanks.
Yeah, the ones that we're just doing right now are in Timber Canyon, Santa Paula. We're doing those right now. Some of the, the ones in Sespe, that was part of the contractor walkthrough yesterday, that we're probably going to be doing, I think there's sixteen wells up there with some associated tankage. The, most of these sites are, you can't see them, most people don't know, except for the one site that she saw, that she showed, that probably everybody has seen it, because if you come down to Caneo Grade, if you look to the right, that's one of the sites.
And if you find hazardous waste, who's responsible for remediating? Is that the property owner?
We don't do a complete site characterization, we just do a surface restoration.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up to the landowner to, to not really complete the job, but if they want to use it for any other use besides what's there now, it's their responsibility.
Any other questions, Commissioner Multer?
Mr. Fields, one other question. Did I hear you allude to the refinery off of Ventura Avenue, the former USA refinery that's abandoned?
Yeah, that's, unfortunately, we don't have anything to do with that.
But is that considered an abandoned facility?
It's, it's not an oil and gas facility, it's a refinery.
Okay, so you don't deal with that at all?
We don't deal with that.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick, this is more directed at staff. We went through this with the State Mining Resource Act and the bonds and all those issues, the ten thousand dollar bond. When that was the minimum established, has that been adjusted, or at least looked at adjusting for inflation over time? And I go back to the issue, we had that one mining problem next to a school here. We had a bond, and it was woefully inadequate. So, I know we're not getting a lot of permits and a lot of activity, but I don't know if staff has looked at whether or not to adjust that bond for inflation.
The short answer to that is no. I think we looked at it about fifteen years ago, there was a lot of work on it, but there wasn't much interest in us looking at it. It requires an ordinance amendment, it is in the ordinance, ten thousand dollars per operation. That is completely separate from the mining bonds that we collect under the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. So the mining bonds can go into the hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars, as where the oil bonds per ordinance is ten thousand dollars.
Did you have something, Mr. Fields?
Yeah, a little bit of private knowledge. As she wrote in nineteen ninety, there was a conditional use permit that was developed, and I was on that committee that helped develop those. At that time, the bonding amount was discussed, and it was decided that with our bond, and like I said, we paid for this facility, basically, we have it covered, the state has it covered. And industry, they stepped right on a plate, and you know, when we said we're going to do this, we're going to increase your assessment, they stepped in and said, "Fine, no problem." So...
Okay, again, we've had situations on the mining side, where we thought we had it covered, and then we have a problem.
I know the state doesn't have mining bonds, I do my thing. And so, in this case, the state has the bonds and has the resources.
Okay, again, I'm just, it's been fifteen years, whether or not it's the appropriate time to at least review it for due diligence purposes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
I think we have Mr. Smith up. Land use regulatory framework.
Good morning, I'm Bruce Smith, and I'm manager of the General Plans Section for the County Planning Division. I'm going to provide, in about an hour, hour and fifteen minutes, an overview of what planners spend a lifetime trying to learn. So, this is going to be skipping, there's a lot of information. Some of the slides you will see are detailed. Please feel free to ask for copies of the entire presentation today, or any portion thereof, and I'll try to get through this. I provided the same presentation to all the member agencies within the County of Ventura that deal with the development process. And also, we've made a presentation to the Ojai Municipal Advisory Council, so... Okay, the topics I'm going to cover today are basically three. First of all, deal with the general plan, both in the context of what does state require, and also in the context of what do we have here in Ventura County. The second section is our development process. Again, a listing of the development laws that we're under and we have to adhere to, and the county's general development process. And the last issue will be California Vernal Quality Act and the county's sequel procedures. Let's start with the general plan. State government, the public resources, excuse me, not the public resources. The government code requires that every planning agency, that's city or county, shall prepare and adopt comprehensive, long-term general plan for the physical development of the county. That is a requirement and has been so since the first element, I think it was in the early nineteen sixties or late nineteen fifties. It's now up to seven mandatory elements, but I'll get to that in a second. Okay, why the general plan? Well, the general plan is actually, or what function does the general plan serve relative to all other ordinances? And what the courts have said is, the general plan is the constitution for virtually all development ordinances and related activities of a jurisdiction. So, the following must be consistent with the general plan. Zoning ordinances, specific plans, subdivisions of land, public works facilities, and I do note an exception here, special districts may overrule if they are allowed to do so by state law. And any public acquisition or disposition of real property. And that includes whether or not a city wants to acquire property in the unincorporated area, or the county wants to acquire property within the cities. Now, both of those jurisdictions have what's called sovereign immunity, meaning, once they've acquired a property, they are not subject to each other's regulations. But in order to acquire it, they have to have a finding of whether or not they're acquiring it for the purpose which is consistent with that jurisdiction's general plan. So it's one of those interesting nuances of state law. Federal, state, and other cities and counties are exempt from each, from other jurisdictions' general plan. And as I mentioned, this is the rule of sovereign immunity. Now, in California, there's one exception, and that is, under the local coastal plan, state agencies are subject to our locally adopted LCP. Okay, general plan and the elements thereof must be integrated, internally consistent, incompatible statements and policies of the adopting agencies. And they must contain statement of development policies, diagrams, text setting forth objectives, principles, standards, and plan proposals. Well, those are actually kind of confusing terms, so in Ventura County, we've actually rendered those down to what we call the big three, goals, policies, and programs. And I'll get to those in a minute. The general plan format, state law goes on to say, "Even though there are seven mandatory elements, you're actually free to adopt any format you want." And so, we took the opportunity. Rather than have seven elements, we have basically four. And they are called resources, hazards, land use, and public facilities and services. And here they are. Goals, policies, and programs, and we have, that's countywide, and it has four chapters by the same name as the appendices that accompany those, which are, as I said, resources, hazards, land use, and public facilities and services. In addition to the countywide general plan, we have several area plans. And they're all listed here, and I'm not going to go into detail on each one of those. But they all contain their own goals, policies, and programs. And it's important to know that the goals are sort of the overarching ultimate purpose, and they are synonymous with plan principles and objectives as stated in state law. And the only distinction we make between the two is that objectives have a measurable standard. Like, the goal is to have a vacancy rate of three point what percent? That would be an objective. Policies. Policies are what guides the development process, and all projects must be consistent with those policies. All discretionary development must be consistent with those policies. Then we have programs. Programs are a coordinated set of future actions to carry out the goals. So if we're directed to prepare an ordinance to do X, Y, or Z, that would be a program for future action. The planning horizon of the county general plan is 2020, and the general plan was updated in 2005 to incorporate that new time horizon. The planning director has the privilege of occasionally fielding questions when there is ambiguity as to what that would actually mean in a particular case, with of course, the right of appeal to your commission or the board of supervisors if the party basically disagreed. Okay, I'm not going to go in detail for the different chapters or appendices, but I have listed out here the different resources that are specifically included in the countywide general plan. Associated with that is a policy map, which shows what are called overlay zones. We have a mineral resource overlay zone, and I noticed I have an old map here because in September of this last year, the scenic highway protection area and the scenic resource protection area were combined. And they're now known as the scenic resource protection areas. Nonetheless, these are the resources which are, were regarded as being so important that heretofore ministerial or development that can be approved over the counter with a simple zone clearance were made to be a discretionary permit. And that is a significant change, because the costs are very much higher, and the timing of the process is significantly longer. Nonetheless, the resource was regarded as so important as requiring case-by-case review, and that's the process that we use to do that. The hazards chapter, this runs the gamut all the way from geo, seismic, fire hazards, coastal wave, beach erosion, and all the way to civil disturbance, which was a chapter that was added after nine eleven in terms of threats that may be posed to society through terrorist acts or other acts that are disruptive. It's basically for emergency response planning in this county. It also includes noise, which is always an interesting subject in and of itself. So there are all, like with resources and the hazards, there are specific areas that have unique sets of regulations. A hundred-year floodplain areas are one such area. Earthquake fault hazard zones. There's a lot of things we can do with engineering, but there are certain facilities that this county has said they are so critical, they don't go in those zones. Schools, any of those sorts of critical facilities. Also, we have four airports or airfields within Ventura County for which there are a hazard zone around, and any kind of development is proposed there, they have to be reviewed by the Ventura County Transportation Commission, and we have to be very careful on FAA rules and other policies. The land use chapter. Simply put, we have these six general land use categories. Urban, existing community. Urban basically includes the cities and the unincorporated communities within their own area of interest for which they're candidates for future incorporation. Pyru is its own urban designation in its own area of interest, and someday, it's hoped that it will incorporate and become its own city. Existing communities are the urban areas which are unincorporated, which are surrounding or next to largely existing cities. Or they predate the policies of these plans, and these plans were adopted back in nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three. And so, or actually, they predate that. The rural community went back as far as nineteen seventy-three. But there are a lot of these communities that predate all of that, and these are regarded as the exceptions. And they're very strict rules of what can and cannot happen within existing communities. But for the most part, that's our urban-type land uses go in those designations. Rural is this transitional area that goes, let's say, from a residential standpoint, two-acre parcels up to about ten-acre parcels. There's a few around, not that many, but we do have some rural areas. The vast majority of the county is designated open space, and that's largely the hillsides. Minimum density or parcel size is ten acres, although the vast majority of the land is zoned at something much larger, usually forty, eighty, or even one hundred and sixty acres. Zone changes, however, are allowed, and occasionally, we get those requests. Agriculture, basically, the prime and statewide and unique soils within the three principal growing regions of the county, the Oxnard Plains, the San Clara River, and Los Poses Valley. And the minimum acreage there is forty acres. And very significantly reduce the types of land uses that can occur in agriculture. And then the last category is state and federal facility, that's essentially not the national forest, but for instance, CSUCI, or the honor, not the honor farm, the, oh, the children's facility out near Central Avenue between here and Camarillo. That's a state and federal facility. They are sovereign immunity, and we recognize them as being what they are. This is a map of the south half of Ventura County, and you'll notice that the light green, which is open space, is the vast majority. The dark green is the agriculture. The yellow, which you can barely see, is the rural. And then the existing community is the salmon-colored. And then the gray is the urban, which is largely the cities within the county. Mentioned area plans, we do have... We do have several area plans. They're just simply more specific in terms of the land use classifications and the types of policies that apply. And they're really getting at to much finer distinctions of urban. Urban is very generic. But within urban, we have essentially residential, we have commercial, we have industrial. So, any of these plans, by the way, are on our website, and invite you all, and you may already have hard copies as well. But the land use chapter also talks about these subjects zoning compatibility, residential building intensity standards, population and dwelling unit forecasts, spheres of influence, and the guidelines for early development, and the SOAR ordinance itself.
Excuse me, Bruce, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question at this point? Or would you rather you wait till the end? Because there's something here that I have a question about.
Please.
Okay. Under spheres of influence, a city has a sphere of influence. And I've got two cities, and here's their sphere of influence, and this is open space in between. Now, this city wants to extend its sphere of influence. Lafco can do that?
Yes, and I was going, thank you, that's my lead in for the next, exactly the next thing I was going to talk about. The two things I wanted to give you a little bit of background on is spheres of influence, guidelines for early development, and the SOAR ordinance. And the next slide, sorry about the readability of this, but in Ventura County, we have created, well, first of all, spheres of influence is defined as the probable ultimate boundaries of a city or special district. That's a requirement of Lafco. Lafco has the authority to determine that, and Lafco will not allow annexation of land to a city or special district unless it's within that sphere of influence. So everything in red here is the sphere of influence of the respective cities. The reason that it goes out in the ocean is largely defensive. The cities wanted some further say in terms of, let's say, offshore facilities that may be in state waters. But cities are not going to be annexing the water, they're not going to be developing out there unless technology changes drastically. Nonetheless, each city, and in Ventura County, we have this unique classification called area of interest. And it's that area between the city, the city sphere, and the next adjacent or neighboring city's area of interest. So, at one time, we had a situation where cities were competing to annex the same land, and we said, timeout, let's at least talk about areas of interest of each respective city. So, the entire south half is divvied up really into areas of interest of each of the respective cities. Now, the Sonomona Mountains are not within an area of interest, the north coast is not, and of course, the north half and Los Poses National Forest are not. But this prevents the sort of fighting between jurisdictions. Now, the guidelines for orderly development, that is a unique document adopted here in Ventura County, and there's probably nothing directly like it in the state of California. There's a couple of jurisdictions that have something similar, but not quite the same. In essence, the cities and the county got together and said, wait, we don't like this competing, like, counties directly competing with the cities, and so, we're going, and we see a lot of efficiencies by compact urban development. So, in that, the document has one overarching policy: whenever and wherever possible, urban development should occur in cities, not the unincorporated area. So, we encourage, even in these existing communities that are outside of cities, the first question is, can you annex? If you're not able to annex, we put you on notice that you will be annexed at some time, and just plan on going to that jurisdiction. Also, the county has said, well, it's not always possible to annex, but if you develop in the county, you should be developing at the same land use type and apply the same development standards as the city. So by general plan policy, we essentially embrace the actual ordinances and standards of the respective jurisdictions. Now, on occasion, exceptions have been made, and in our housing element, we're going to have to make some more exceptions. But that's a self-imposed by the county of Ventura on itself in terms of its actions. Outside of the city sphere of influence, the city's say is less. They're allowed to weigh in on the issue and comment. We provide them with notification, they comment back, and to the extent that their general plans have general policies about what's going on, the cities don't have any direct say. But for our part, we say any urban development has to be within a pre-established existing community. We're not going to be developing around your city. In areas that are not within a city sphere of influence like Pyru, we're the lead agency, the cities don't have a say. And that is, Ben, probably the most, single most important policy in this county, quite honestly, for the last 30 years. Make that 40 years.
Before you go any further, I don't know if you're going to talk about curb lines under SOAR because of sphere of influence and areas of interest, or are you going to bring that up later?
Good. Well, first of all, with SOAR, the SOAR ordinance, of course, was adopted in 2000, I believe, basically by vote of the electorate. And basically, what it does is that before any general plan amendment that would either change a land use designation of agriculture, open space, or rural to some more intense land use classification, or before a general plan amendment to change any of the policies to those three land use designations. Before that could go into effect, an affirmative vote of the countywide electorate would have to occur. That's in essence the SOAR ordinance. So it puts strength into the current general plan and general plan policies that relates to those land use designations. Yes?
Wouldn't, wouldn't the vote come after it went through planning and the commission if it were required and the board of supervisors? Doesn't the vote come last?
That is the envisioned process, it's probably the most logical. However, if somebody was successful in getting enough signatures, they could go directly to ballot and bypass the local.
But anybody could do that, per sequo, anybody could.
It's not per sequo, it's for the, for the government code.
Another question, Mr. Mulcahy.
Yes, Bruce, again, let me give you, maybe you covered this and I just didn't get it. We have Santa Paula and we have Ventura, and they have spheres of influence toward each other. There's going towards Santa Paula, there's a Ventura sphere of influence. You've got open space in between. Okay, now, the city of Ventura says, we want to expand our sphere of influence. They want to go into that area between Santa Paula and Ohio, and the city of Santa Paula says, we want to expand our sphere. Now, we've got open space in between. Now, it goes to Lafco, and Lafco says, fine, Ventura, you can expand five more or three more miles out Santa Paula, and then the cities are eventually going to come together. Is this possible? And again, we've got SOAR says it's open space, but if you continue to expand the spheres of influence and Lafco permits it, you can destroy all the open space between cities.
That is true.
Thank you. That's scary.
Well, highly unlikely in the context, well, first of all, it's not going to happen overnight, but who knows? Who has the crystal ball for 100, 200 years from now? But there's another set of policies and agreements in place, and they're called greenbelt agreements between the restrictive, respective jurisdictions. In the case of the two examples, or the example that you gave, Santa Paula and Ventura, there is a greenbelt agreement that has been adopted by both of those jurisdictions and has been recognized by the county and Lafco as being in place. It requires the assent of both jurisdictions to amend that. So, now, if they both agreed to go up to each other's area of interest, and if Lafco felt that that was justified, under the constitution, this, and rules of the state of California, that is permissible. Now, each of the cities, and I also mentioned, each of the cities have their own SOAR ordinance, which on top of it does the same, slightly different, in that it recognizes what's called a city-urban reserve boundary, beyond which their own city electorate would have to vote on extending past that boundary. So there's a lot of mechanisms in place that highly unlikely that that scenario would actually occur.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure. The last of the four chapters is public facilities and services, transportation, circulation, and all the different types of public facilities and services that is necessary to support development within the county. I don't have, sorry, I don't have the map, but there's a map associated with this as well, and it's largely the transportation network, what's called the regional road network, and the widens are necessary to support the land use plans. And also on that same map are what are called community sewage treatment plants. Community sewage treatment plant is, as opposed to an onsite sewage treatment plant, is that type of facility that treats sewage from offsite, usually a community-type sewage treatment facility. Okay, that is general plan brief. Again, I don't have, we're not going to go into the details today, but that's just an overview. Now, the development laws, moving into the third section, the development laws that Ventura County has to adhere to are subdivision map act, map act. There is also specific requirements for specific plans, zoning regulations, which include such things as equal treatment and protection, open space zoning, density bonus law, variances, residential development, and second dwelling units. What we've noticed over the years is the state legislature, this county, when I started as a professional, Ventura, excuse me, state of California was largely home rule, meaning cities and counties could pretty much determine their own fate through their own general plans and zoning ordinances. Increasingly, what the state is doing is saying, the cities and counties are operating in a manner which is too protectionist, and there are certain facilities we think they should adopt across the board. And so, they've interjected and said such things as second dwelling units, you shall have and you shall allow them ministerial. And that has been coming so much more pronounced. They also have, the government code also has regulations dealing with development agreements, permit streamlining act, fees, exactions, dedications, conditions, school facility fees, public notices and hearings, growth limitations, landscape, water conservation and recycling, interagency referrals, and last but not least, consistent, mandatory consistency with the general plan. That's an awful lot of law they have to understand, and sometimes they don't mesh. Sometimes they actually conflict. So, that is our challenge. The county's development process, boy, the spaghetti diagram here, I'm not going to go into detail, but I'll just kind of give you a word picture of what that involves. An applicant, a prospective applicant would come to the counter, hopefully they'll come in and ask questions before they try to give us an application, but we are expending great efforts in trying to get them the proper information before they design their project. But after they've designed a project and they wish to make application to us, they do so, and then we have 30 days to determine if that application is complete. And it's not for just the planning division, but that's all for all the support agencies as well. Once an application has been deemed complete, then by law, we have 30 days, with possibility of 45 days if the applicant agrees, to determine what type of environmental document would be appropriate for that. If it's a negative declaration, I'll be getting these a little later, but if it's a negative declaration, it's six months, and if it's an EIR, it's one year. I can tell you, in the state of California, no jurisdiction gets through with an EIR in one year. It is just simply impossible. And we've pointed that out to the state legislature, but they have yet to change the law. Nonetheless, the whole point of it is due diligence, moving it along, and in saying, get to the end of the process as quickly and most efficiently as possible. With, after that, we essentially go to public hearing. It's either a public hearing before planning director, or they're designee, your commission, or the board of supervisors. With that are conditions of approval, and assuming that the project is approved and the conditions are approved, then it's followed on by, usually, if it's a map, recording of the map. If it's a permit, then imposition of the conditions, most of which are prior to zone clearance or concurrent with the zone clearance process. In a nutshell, that's our, that's our process, and that's all I really wanted to convey regarding that. Now, one of the biggest reasons, or the, probably the most time-consuming and complex aspect of what we do in the discretionary permit processing, or for that matter, any amendments to the general plan or zoning code, is compliance with California Environmental Quality Act. And that's embodied, that body of laws is contained within the Public Resources Code, and also there is a document known as the SEQUA Guidelines, which is the California Code of Regulations. The objectives of the California Environmental Quality Act are to disclose environmental impacts to the decision makers, that's your body, and the public, to identify and prevent and to mitigate environmental damage, to disclose agency decision-making, to enhance public participation, and to foster intergovernmental coordination. Many have asked, since California Environmental Quality Act is largely procedural in nature, how does it accomplish all those objectives? I'm not going to go through this entire table here, but if you're interested, these are all the things that are required procedurally and how they actually meet the SEQUA objectives. The SEQUA process starts with defining whether or not what you're doing is a project. And I'll get to a definition of project in a second, but let's say it is a project, and then we have to screen that project for the application of the California Environmental Quality Act and any exemptions thereto. If it's not exempt, we then prepare an initial study. Based on the findings of that initial study, we either prepare a negative declaration, which means no significant impact, or mitigated negative declaration, which means with the imposition of these mitigation measures or change the project, there would be no significant impact, or an EIR. There is potential significant impacts that may not be mitigated to a less than significant level. After that document is prepared, it goes out for public review and comment. There is then a requirement that the local, that the lead agency respond in writing to all comments that were received during the public review period, and then they finalize that, that document. Once that document has been finalized, in the case of an EIR, that's a certification, and negative declaration is simply approved, but once that has been made, then decision on the project is made. If the project is approved, certain findings have to be If the project is approved, certain findings have to be put in the public record.
Excuse me, I think we have a question.
Where do exemptions figure into this, and are there exemptions that are coming down from the state that affect us?
That's my next slide. Almost there. I'll talk fast. After which, the decision is made, a notice of determination is filed with clerk of the board, and that starts the statute of limitations where some aggrieved party who feels that we have not done it correctly may take us to court.
I think we have another question, Bruce.
Yes.
On that, on that same slide about notice of determination?
Yep.
Do you only file those for projects that are approved, or do you have to file a notice of determination if they're not approved?
No, we do not file a notice of determination if they're not approved.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, definition of a project. A project involves, first of all, any activity of a public agency, a person supported by a public agency, or a permit entitlement issued by that public agency. First of all, the public works agency doesn't issue for their own projects, they are a governmental agency, so anything they do that will adversely affect the environment is a project. Any legislative action we have, even though we're the project applicant, if it has an effect on the physical environment, that is a project. An applicant who applies for a permit, that is a project. Now, it also has to have the potential for direct or indirect physical change to the environment. So if it's just a regulatory thing of, for instance, collection of fees, then that is not subject to SEQA. Unless the collections of fees are specifically for a physical change to the environment, which we have not previously disclosed what the impacts will be, then that may be in fact a project. The other aspect of what is a project is that it encompasses the idea of the whole of the action. There are many cases where we have projects before us where some components are ministerial. They can go with the simple zone clearance. Others involve discretionary actions. Well, what state law says you can't segment them apart, it's the whole of the action. So multiple or related actions or permits are included, and also we are required, usually we're the lead agency, you may have state agencies that are involved, fish and game, et cetera, we're the lead agency, and they would be responsible agencies, but we have the task of ensuring that our environmental documents disclose the impacts associated with their permits as well. The screening, and this gets to your question, of exemptions. We go through a process to say, well, first of all, is it even a project? And if it's not a project, it's outside of SEQA. Is there any possibility of impact? There's a general rule in SEQA that says where it's clear that there's no possibility of impact, it's outside of SEQA. Then there are a listing of statutory exemptions, ministerial permits are statutorily exempt. They're not subject to SEQA. Then for discretionary-type actions, there are a list of categorical exemptions, usually small structures, change of use, things that fairly, well, the State of California has said, these are generally less than significant in all cases. Now, there are some exceptions to those, and I'll get that in the next slide. But if it's not in those previous four exemptions, then we then ask the question, was the previous environmental document prepared? And if it was, and that document is not, is relatively current and accurate, we will then tear off of that environmental document rather than start from scratch and start over. If we're tearing off a previous environmental document, we also are allowed to do addendums or supplements to those documents, and there's a procedure for making those changes. If we don't have a previous environmental document, we do the initial study, and it results, as I said, in the preparation of an ND, MND, or EIR. The exceptions to categorical exemptions, we have a general rule, which is, notwithstanding the fact that it may be categorically exempt, if there is known information that a significant impact will occur because of unusual circumstances, we are no longer categorically exempt, we now need to move to the initial study. Also, significant cumulative impacts is grounds for not using a categorical exemption. Any federal, state, or local mapped resource or hazard, which applies to certain classes, if those exist, that's grounds for not using the categorical exemption. If it's in the vicinity or seen from a scenic highway, it's not exempt. Hazard waste sites listed by Cal EPA are not exempt, and significant historical resources. Initial studies, I'm not going to spend too much time on this, but it involves project description, environmental baseline, or what is the environmental setting? Because SEQA is always about comparing what is the change to the existing physical environment. It's not to remediate all the sins of the past, except where that problem occurred in an unlawful manner. If they weren't permitted to do the grading, for instance, and they caused environmental damage and associated, and then after the fact came in here and said, well, I'm not having any impact on the biological resources, in this county, we say, nope. You don't get to say that the existing environment is the day you walk in, the existing environment is before you did the illegal unlawful activity. But if you did it lawfully, that is part of the existing environment. So, time extension, if it's simple time extension, there would be no significant impact on environment because they were doing it lawfully, and they're just simply carrying the same activity forward into the future. Impacts, boy, they involve both direct, indirect, onsite, offsite, construction versus operational, intermittent versus ongoing, and the difference between a project impact and cumulative impact. Economic impacts are generally not part of SEQA unless it can be clearly shown that the economic impact would have an indirect adverse effect on the physical environment. That's a hard threshold to meet. Then, if there are any feasible mitigation measures, and these mitigation measures are just simply actions, either by condition of the governing agency or by the applicant themselves, to avoid, minimize, rectify, reduce, or eliminate, or compensate for that impact. Then last, there's mandatory findings of significant, findings, and then determination of, as I said, MD, ND, MND, or EIR. One of the key principal facts are, is that SEQA is largely an informational document. It actually does not give you any authority above and beyond what your statutes have to, to regulate development. But as a general-purpose government, nonetheless, we have somewhat broad challenge or authority under health, safety, and welfare. And we're required, where feasible, to mitigate significant adverse impacts. But whatever we do, it has to be based on substantial evidence. And what is substantial evidence but really comes down to facts, reasonable assumptions based on facts, and expert opinion based on facts. It's not opinion. It can never be opinion. There are some issues, however, which we're all experts. For instance, visual or aesthetic impacts. And so if a community basically says, I, we as a community, or a significant portion of our community believe, based on these set of facts, this will have an adverse impact to our community character, that's probably sufficient evidence to throw it into at least an EIR or an MND to try to mitigate it. Other issues, noise, et cetera, you need specific facts, and you need the expertise to be able to argue those facts. You can't come up here as a layperson and say, I think it's noisy. That is just simply your opinion, and it would not, it would not be supportable. I won't go into tearing, I mentioned it earlier, and then this, state law also allows local jurisdictions to adopt thresholds of significance. In this county, we have two policy documents. One is adopted by the Board of Supervisors, and it was last updated in 1999, it's called the Administrative Supplement to SEQA. It's largely procedural and says who's responsible to do what in Ventura County. The initial study assessment guidelines are, as they say, the guidelines that are put forth that set the threshold criteria for determining when a significant effect would occur and when it would not occur, and the methodology used to, to come to that conclusion. That responsibility has been delegated to the directors of the respective agencies that are responsible for certain issues. For instance, the public works agency prepares the guidelines for transportation, we prepare the guidelines for community character, and et cetera, et cetera. These are the responsibilities. The county planning division, well, as I mentioned, each of the agencies have their own responsibility for their technical areas, but the planning division has this kind of broad overarching coordinative role, and we are called upon at times to give at least our two cents of advice to other agencies when they're preparing their environmental documents to get their way through this process. We have a committee called Environmental Quality Advisor Committee, they're basically advisory to the Board of Supervisors. We have a hearing, staff hearing body, known as Environmental Report Review Committee. We review EIRs for their technical adequacy, and then their, of course, respective roles for the Board of Supervisors and clerk of the board. Now, this, I think, is the last slide here. Our general plan, and I'm coming back full circle, one is SEQA and general plan. Our general plan has a lot of policies that say discretionary development shall do X, Y, or Z. And, as you'll notice, the general plan topics and all the resources and hazards are the same ones that are listed in our initial study. And so we make direct correlation between topic to topic. There are certain policies within the general plan that don't allow overriding considerations. I mentioned earlier that SEQA does not give you any authority you don't otherwise have. It's informational, you could still approve a project that has significant unavoidable adverse impacts if you adopt overriding considerations that say these things override the negative effects. But in this county, through our general plan, there are certain policies that say, no, 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 no overriding considerations in these cases. So, I'm not going to go through them in detail, but here's, here's the list of the ones that do not allow overriding considerations. With that, that is my thumbnail, did I make it? I made it in 45 minutes, talking fast. So, any questions that you have regarding this very broad subject?
One or two, I think. Commissioner Multer.
No questions, just a thank you comment. That was a great presentation, you didn't read everything to us, you gave us a general overview. I've learned a lot from this, thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome.
May we, may we have the, the copy of your PowerPoint presentation?
Sure.
To have as a resource, thank you.
Commissioner.
I was surprised at the open space designation of 10 acres, how did that come about? I would have thought it would be much larger. And what ramifications does that have on developing being such a small acreage?
That's interesting. In the mid 19s, actually early 1970s, the requirement for the Open Space and Conservation Amendment was required by the State of California, and our county was engaged like all the other jurisdictions to prepare such an element. There was a very hot debate as to what should be the minimum parcel size in open space. The original staff recommendation was 20 acres minimum. And a lot of property owners said, no, 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 I don't, we think that's not appropriate, we think 10 acres. Well, rightly or wrongly, the board weighed all the evidence and said 10 acres is the minimum parcel size. In 1982, 83, in response to a law that had been in effect since 76, the county actually got around to rezoning properties to be consistent with its own general plan. And even though we have still a few residual parcels that don't quite meet it, for the vast majority of land, we went through a major rezoning program. Most of the open spaces zone, or designated property in the county is in fact now zoned 40, 80, 160 acres. There are certain areas that are 10 acres. The Terroja Valley, for the most part, or at least the significant portion thereof, is zoned for 10 acres. That does, some have regarded that as being a level of intensity which may be too impactful to normal open space areas. Others have said, well, wait a second, there's not, there is not one size fits all. There are appropriate areas perhaps in the county which are, are necessary and appropriate for 10 acre parcels. So we go through a process, basically a property owner has to request a zone change, and we are then charged by the Board of Supervisors of not looking at, looking at that zone change in isolation to that one property owner, but in fact, we're mandated to look at it, the effect, what if all your neighbors did the same thing? Of course, the big question is how far afield, who are your neighbors? What is the geographical area? So, this is an ongoing issue, and the Board of Supervisors, in fact, in 2005, had before them a, an amendment that had been requested to make 20 acres the minimum parcel size in open space, that did not pass, but nonetheless, that, that issue keeps coming back up.
Thank you, sir. That's a great presentation, Bruce. And I think we could all use the, the copy of your PowerPoint. I do have one question, I guess it came up in your presentation, I thought about it afterwards, has to do with LAFCO and public facilities? And I don't know if you have the historical knowledge or not, how is it that the Ventura School, California Youth Authority slash CDC facility in Camarillo was annexed by the City of Oxnard for a given period of time and ultimately deannexed? Do you have any knowledge of that? I mean, I recall seeing an article, and showed this little finger of something coming out nearby city limits, winding, I think, up Santa Clara and then up Wright Road to create this annexation. And that was a LAFCO situation, I mean, how did, how did something like that happen?
I don't know if that occurred prior to LAFCO or prior to a tightening down of state LAFCO law, but I used to work with the City of Oxnard, and I was actually part of a program called the detachment of about half of the Del Norte area, which El Rio, Strickland Acres, that area. About half of that area was owned by a company known as Larwin Development Company, and they had come in and they had annexed piecemeal a lot of that area. Also, the City of Oxnard, and still to this day, provides a sewer line that goes up to a development just north of Camarillo. So that little shoe string was actually a sewer line extension.
Okay.
When I first went to the City of Oxnard, their general plan had their ultimate goal is to annex halfway into the Los Bocas Valley. They showed their population by the year 2000 to be 1.5 million people. That was their objective at the time. Well, they have since, of course, scaled back, and, and LAFCO has basically said, no, 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 no. So, the Los Bocas Valley is actually within its own area of interest. So, there were, nonetheless, this land was part of the City of Oxnard, and what LAFCO did in the 1970s is it said to the City of Oxnard, all this land you have, and by the way, the city had designated it community reserve. city had designated it community reserve sometime in the future, but not right now. So, LAFCO basically said, well, city of Oxnard, there's some properties that you want to annex close into the city. How about detaching these properties up here in Del Norte in exchange for the properties that you want to annex closer in? They said, okay. And so it got detached from the city and is now an incorporated area. So, in a nutshell, that's the history of how it happened before and what we're left with today. But they still have the sewer line, nonetheless.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, great presentation. Can we take five minutes here before we start the next presentation? Seems like a good idea, doesn't it?
Hmm. Somehow this got switched around? Yeah, they did. So, the next one is this. Oops. See if we can find. Okay, let's go. It's good. Poor person, what I can do. You can stay there and I can pretty much see it. Can you? Right, you can move this past. It's probably easier if you're right. Yeah. Listened. Should we show them how to enter the number? We're actually not really showing them how to use it. Some of them are just showing that this is what planners need. Oh, okay. So, we can actually probably, we can just take off the, take off the, is it down here? We can take off the person. There you go. Yeah, it's under, there you go. Yeah.
Okay, back in the session. Next, I think we have a demonstration. County GIS.
Good morning, Commissioner Rodriguez, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, I'm Tricia Meyer. I'm manager of the General Plan section in the Ventura County Planning Division, and with me I have Franca Rosengren. She's a planner also in the Program Administration section, and she told me this is her first time down here, so. She's actually just going to assist me with the technology so we can run through it fairly quickly for you. And what we want to do is give you a sense of what a planner does when they receive a new discretionary permit case, and they need to see that it meets all of the general plan policies and programs that Bruce showed you, and work through some of the CEQA issues. So, this is what they do. We open up a program, an application that we have, it's called Planning GIS, and we start looking through the different data layers that are located there. So, what we've done is we've opened up already, we've typed in a parcel number, and this is for a parcel that may or may not be familiar to you. I actually, this is a case that I worked on and brought to you back in February of 2008, and it was a subdivision out in the Ojai Valley on the Martin and Jurgen Gramco property. And what they did was they subdivided and created forty-eight acre parcel out there. The parcel you're looking at that's highlighted there is 203 acres. It's just west of the Matilah Ranch subdivision and north of Highway 150, as you can see there. So, if a planner were to get a case like that where they're looking at a potential subdivision, then the first thing they do is they probably open up the land use folder, so we'll go ahead and do that. And we'll look at some of the information that's immediately available to us, and that includes the area plan designation. It might be easier if we do it one by one, Franca, so it's, yeah. It opened up everything there for us. So, immediately we'd know, and most people would already know, that this is in the Ojai Valley area plan area, and that shows us there, it says Ojai Valley. And then it gives us the, it gives us the area plan designation, which is open space, forty acre minimum parcel size, which also corresponds with the zoning designation there, which is OS forty acres. And the green that you see is actually, I think, the general plan designation, which is open space. So, often what we have is that the general plan designation, the overall general plan designation is a little bit more general than what's specified in the area plan. If a parcel is in an actual area plan, there is a more specific parcel size. So, there you see that it goes from open space to open space forty acres. And, so those are primarily, and then if you look at another element or a data layer that's been added recently is the restrictive covenant data layer. So, this particular parcel has a lot of biological resources on it, and we wanted to make sure that we could protect them. And so, what happened was that through the permitting process, they were required to record a restrictive covenant. And that restrictive covenant specifies how they can use the property. It's mostly ag land, actually, I mean, what they're doing out there. They've got, you know, hay, and they have a small area where they grow oak trees, and then they grow other crops. They sort of switch out different crops out there. So, it's primarily an agricultural site. And so, what they would be allowed to do would be to build one single family home on each of the parcels. And so, you have the one forty acre parcel that was created on the left-hand side where it shows open space. That was actually the parcel that was created. And then you have the restrictive covenant that's showing on the other parcels. So, restrictive covenants are great that they show up that way because then we, that alerts the planner that there's something special to look for. And that would be true if they came in to build their single family home, and that's a ministerial permit over the counter, and then the planning staff at the counter would be able to pull up this data layer and say, okay, there's a restrictive covenant, I better go make sure that they're not going to, you know, disturb these biological resources or that there weren't some special conditions placed on this particular parcel that would restrict perhaps the location of the home or something else. So, that's essentially what that's intended for. It's sort of a red flag and alerts someone to go look at the file. And we use this, we really use this Planning GIS application hand in hand with our Permits Plus system, which is our database, our permitting database. So, if someone were to pull up this parcel in our Permits Plus system, they would immediately be able to access a copy of that restrictive covenant. That's all been scanned in, and so they would be able to pull that up right at the counter and take a look at it and understand what it was that had been restricted on that particular parcel. Eventually, we're working towards trying to combine those two, where we'd be able to be in our Permits Plus system, and through Permits Plus, we'd be able to go ahead and access the Planning GIS data layer. So, that's sort of what we're working towards, and at this point in time, we're just, we're functioning, we're using both. So, it's very often on our desktops, we would have both of those applications open, and we would be looking at both of them as we're reviewing a particular parcel. So, let's go ahead and show the aerials. We do have aerial imagery that's updated every year, and that is also, you know, for us, I mean, just a huge resource, especially for sites that are far away. And this gives you a better understanding here of what's going on in that parcel. If you want to zoom in for us, Franca, we can see that there's some ag production on the site. And this would also allow us to see fairly easily as we zoomed in whether there were already homes there, if there were other types of uses that were active there. And another thing that we can see here, if we look at this, is that there are creeks that are running on the east side and the south side of the property. If you scroll up, if you move, yeah, there we go. Live Oak Creek is actually running along the frontage with Baldwin Road down there. You see the tree cover? That's really the dead giveaway that there may be a creek there and there may be oak trees that are protected or biological resources. And so, the aerials are hugely helpful for all of those reasons, and we can kind of zoom in. We have a certain resolution, you know, limitation, but we are able to see quite a bit on a particular parcel by using the aerial imagery. And then we have in our list of data layers, so she's going to zoom in for us. Sure. We'll see how close we can get. We'll see how close we can get. That's probably good. You can see it's still a decent resolution even at that, at that scale. So, and then we also have the ability, we can print any of these. So we have the ability to print these and take them with us to a meeting, show them to the applicant. We can have our G I S department print even, you know, large size, you know, aerials if we need to look at them. For some of the oil sites that Katie was discussing earlier today, they take up, you know, immense acreage. And so to try and look at it on this screen would be nearly impossible, especially if you're trying to locate specific, you know, wells or equipment. And so for those, we get sort of a large scale aerials from our G I S department printed out so that we can look at them more easily. But if you want to scroll down, Franca, let's take a look at whether, because the, one of the questions that would come to my mind if I saw, you know, a parcel like that would be, oh, is it impacted by the Ojai Traffic Impact Area, which is in that general vicinity? And she clicked on that and nothing happened. And the reason why is because it turns out that the Ojai Traffic Impact Area does not go beyond the, the western boundary of the Ventura River. So, and the Ventura River is just on the other side of the Matilahha Ranch subdivision. And so as she scrolls over, you'll see that there's some green highlighting that occurs. And so that's, you can take a look at that. And that Ojai Traffic Impact Area is definitely something that does restrict the types of uses that are allowed. And so that's something that we look for right away. We would also look at, you know, which supervisory district this is located in because we always notify the supervisor's office when we have a new project coming in. Scroll down there. And we would look to see, just click it right here.
Tricia, real quick, you said any project you would notify the supervisor?
Discretionary permits that are assigned to the case planner. Let's clarify. And then SOAR is another area, you know, something else when we look, when we see something that's ag or open space, that's immediately a flag that we should check, you know, to see if it's SOAR protected, depending on what it is that they're proposing there. Because if they were proposing a general plan amendment to change the zoning designation, then that might, that might be a big issue. And we'd want to alert them to that immediately. So you can see that this whole area, this whole swath of area is within Steve Bennett's district and that it's protected by SOAR. And because what they're proposing was not a change to the open space designation and they were creating a forty acre parcel, that wasn't an issue. So we have that. We also notify all of the property owners, or not property owners, but rather property owner associations and HOAs that are in the vicinity when we have a new project. And so we click on that data layer. And that actually, that will give us a list, which, you know, she doesn't need to access that, but it'll actually give us a list and we update that once a year with all of the appropriate contacts and addresses so that they're, they're adequately and dutifully notified and can provide comments to us as we're processing a project. We also have a data layer showing the municipal advisory council. So we'll know, I would assume that this falls within the Ojai, Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council. You may want to scroll, see if you can move the map back over that direction to where our parcel is. The technology can sometimes be a little slow, so you'll have to bear with us. Yes, and that is definitely one of the tricks that, you know, that the planners use. However, the aerial allows us to somewhat see more, you know, it's, it's more illustrative of what's going on there. So the next thing that we would look at would be the resources folder. And I guess there's important farmland inventory. That's fine. Eligible scenic highways is another good one. And we see here that we have an eligible scenic highway in the area and that's Baldwin Road. And that's a state eligible scenic highway. That just means that it hasn't been officially designated as a scenic highway by the state of California, but that it has potential to be designated as such. And we've created a buffer within, I believe, a quarter mile or a half mile of those highways so that we can make sure that we're not impacting those resources in some fundamental way when we're processing a project. It's something that would be evaluated as part of the initial study and the environmental document that's done for the project. Can you look at important farmland inventory? The state has an important farmland inventory where they designate soils as either prime, you know, they basically have several designations, you know, locally important soils for agricultural production purposes, statewide importance. And so here we see that the soils on that particular property are locally important. And so there are, in our initial study assessment guidelines, specific criteria and thresholds that we look at to see whether a particular project, let's say they were proposing a different type of use that would take land out of, you know, ag production and, you know, create some sort of, I don't know, a dog kennel or something along those lines. Then we would want to look at exactly how much, how much acreage was being taken out and whether it met any of those thresholds as far as creating a significant environmental impact. And we just, we'd assess all of that in the initial study. And then we have land conservation app contracts.
Just, excuse me, we have a question. Commissioner Muldoon, do this.
Do, um, do you know, is it the county that determines the importance of these soils or is it the state? And how, and how are they determined? And that's something I haven't really understood.
The state is the one who determines, there are, there are four different categories for important soils. And so the state is the one who, and they recently did an update to that, maybe two years ago. They actually came out and had people in the field. They used, what they do is they use aerial imagery. And they're using aerial imagery to see, okay, where are orchards planted? And where are, where are their, where's their ag production that's occurring? And they compare that to their old maps, which I believe they started in the nineteen seventies and then they updated over time. And they will rely on that. They will send us those and say, did we miss anything? Are there other areas that are, that you believe are locally important that we've missed? For the prime soils, I think they've pretty much got that, you know, figured out. But they will, they will send it to us and we do provide them with feedback. And then they finalize those maps. And I was really surprised a couple of years ago when they were sending representatives out into the field to spot check those. So we rely on them for that, for those designations. And I believe they actually have on their website, I believe there is the ability to go on their website and find out. You know, they have, but they have kind of large scale maps. So it might be hard to get down to a parcel size. But they do have large scale maps of how the soils have been designated within Ventura County.
And, and it's a function of what's being grown on the property?
Well, it's really supposed to be related to soils. So it's a little more complicated than that because we have had instances where farmers have attempted to say, well, this, my soil's not really prime soil or it's not really locally important. And so in order to make that case to the state, which is what they have to do, because only the state can change that map, they have to do all kinds of soil testing. So it's not just a matter of what's grown on, on the site. But that's how they, when they're looking at the aerials and they're trying to see if there was more land taken out, because typically what we're, when they're adjusting those maps today, they're not usually adding in farmland. That, that could happen, but typically they're taking land out where they see that, you know, for instance, some of the cities have annexed land and they've built developments, housing developments. Then they're taking that out of their farmland inventory.
Thank you.
So moving on. We do.
What?
The L C A. Oh, right, L C A contracts. So did you click on that layer? And it's not showing us anything?
Not on that.
So, okay, so that one does not have an L C A contract apparently. But if there were an L C A contract, then that's something we'd want to look at because the L C A contract also has specific thresholds that must be maintained. So a certain, a number of acres of farmland in production in order to maintain that contract that allows them to get the lower property tax assessments. And so if they're proposing something, let's go back to maybe a dog kennel that was taking out land that was supposed to be under L C A contract, then that would pose a problem. And so we'd want to, we'd want to address that right up front with them. Do you want to go to biological resources? So biological resources, this is something, the general plan, it has a lot of programs and policies related to protection of biological resources. But it's only really been in the last, I would say, you know, five years or so that we've had the ability to map out some of this and create as a Planning G I S data layer where it would be readily available for a planner to look at. As opposed to sending out a biologist each time to try and figure out if there was a stream on the property or, you know, what was going on, et cetera. And wetlands, you know, inventories and those sorts of things. So we have really keyed in with information that's available through state agencies and tried to, and then we've also even convened groups of people here to try and determine what's locally important as far as biological resources and create data layers that then we can look at. So here you see that we have, when you look at the list there, there are critical habitats. And what happens if you click on that? I'm kind of curious, actually. No critical habitats. C N D D B. That is, I believe it's the California Natural Diversity Database. And so what that's going to show is if there were any threatened, endangered or rare species that they knew of that were in that vicinity. And that is something that, you know, only the planning division would have access to because they wouldn't want to throw that out there for, for the general public. And so we're under sort of strict regulations as far as who we can give that particular information to. But it does give us and if there's a consulting biologist, some basic information and understanding of the property that we can kind of go with as we're reviewing this, this project, whatever it might be for any potential impacts on biological resources. Do you want to take, take off the, maybe the aerial? Because I'm wondering if some of those aren't showing up because of the aerial.
It's harder to see.
I would have thought with the creeks running through the property that something would have showed up. Oh, see, there we see. When they do the C N D D B database, they don't specifically know, they're not able to go on everybody, every property to try and determine where, you know, a particular species might be. And so they've created sort of these great swaths of area. And so you see that there's a, that part of an area for something that's protected, which we can't see unless we, unless we move over, is coming onto that property. Now, in this particular case.
Do you want me to move over?
Um, I think we're probably good. We don't need to know exactly what it was. But in this particular case, since they're only proposing a subdivision of one lot from the two hundred and three acres, that wouldn't have been an issue. Let's see what it says for wetlands. Okay, so there are a lot of wetlands that have been designated in this particular area, almost, you know, all the way around this property. And so that's where, in this particular case for this property, we had to send out a biologist to do some, some studies and make sure that the wetlands wouldn't be impacted and to help us in crafting the restrictive covenant to protect those. How about wildlife movement? Do you have any wildlife corridors through there? We do. Okay, so it looks like we've got a wildlife movement corridor there. And so that's something that also would be assessed as part of the initial study with the, with the evaluation of impacts to biological resources. And then we have the water bodies buffer, which is simply, I believe, a two hundred foot buffer around all water bodies. So since we saw those wetlands, we already know that there's going to be quite a few, that a lot of this area probably will be buffered. And these, again, are just, they're all tools that we can, it's, it's really just, it's a visual representation, something we might not notice just by opening up a site plan and looking at a project. And so once we go to this tool and this application, we can start opening these data layers and we start to get a much more broad understanding of what is on that parcel. And it enables us to really prepare a much more detailed and thorough environmental review as far as completing the initial study. Now, we also have the ability to, to show a report. Can you do that get report function? So when she clicks on that parcel and we do get report, what it does is it assembles all of the information from all of the data layers. And so we can just get a printed report. It's usually two to three pages in length that gives us, you know, the zoning. It gives us all of the land use designations. It tells us whether it's within one of those buffered water bodies, whether it has something that's shown on the C N D D B database, whether it's within the hundred year flood plain. I mean, it basically goes, goes through all of that. And it looks like it takes, it takes a little while to generate those reports. You can hear it almost clicking through each of those data layers trying to, to capture that information. But that's also a good tool. And something that is used frequently by our staff out at the front counter because they can print that out, they can share that information with someone who, a property owner who comes in and maybe who's interested in purchasing a piece of land and may not know what they might be able to do with it. And it gives a lot of very valuable information. So there you can see how it popped up and gives the, gives the acreage, the, such as parcel number. It, it tells you the area plan designation, the restrictive covenants on the parcel that we discussed. Can you scroll down?
Sure.
Tells us about that eligible scenic highway that we mentioned. Uh, oh, can you go back up to local? Okay, so it tells us, you know, definitively that there's no L C A contract on that particular property, no mining permits, no oil permits. An undetermined determination for paleontological importance. And actually, there had been some studies done on that particular property for archaeological reasons because they had previously proposed a golf course in that location. So, and, and indeed, I believe they approved the golf course, but it was never built. And here we're showing from the C N D D B list, the common name of Peninsula Nolina. And I'm not even sure if that is a animal species or a plant species, but it's up there and we could go talk to our staff biologist and find out if that's something we should be paying attention to. Then under hazards, it's showing us that there is some fire history to that site, that it's not within an earthquake fault hazard zone. Looks like it's within a military training route zone, which simply means that if they were going to build something over two hundred feet in height, that we'd need, need to send it to Point Mugu for, for review. They weren't proposing that, so. It's showing us the, the elementary schools that would be specific to that particular area, that it's not within the one eighteen traffic impact area. That, that was clear. So, yeah, and so it's showing us, you know, the property owners associations, Rancho Matilahha, obviously because it's directly adjacent to it and all of that. So that's, that's essentially what we're able to do with this tool. I don't know if you had any questions for us?
I think we do.
Is the public, is the public allowed to access any of this information online on the city's website? Not directly? They would have to ask? Is it privileged if someone were, if they heard about the golf course that was going to be proposed for this? Could a member of the public go in and get, get this information?
They certainly can come in and request it. And I, and I believe our counter staff often prints up, you know, they'll print up this map, they'll print up that report and provide that to them. Some of the information, though, is privileged. Like I mentioned with that California Natural Diversity Database. And so, and sometimes there's archaeological information that's privileged information. And so some things we have to hold back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Muldoon.
She asked my question and you answered it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners. It's leap years ahead of the overlays you were using before, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, we had paper mats, you know, so that was a whole different ballgame. And this allows us, you know, the Planning G I S allows us to do updates immediately. So we have staff that's assigned to do that. And we know that we're looking at the most updated information available when we pull it open. And we're often adding new data layers. That's a, you know, we're adding new data layers probably, I would say, at least, you know, maybe one or two every year. So as information becomes available or as someone points out to us that, you know, there's other information maybe that other agencies within Ventura County have, other G I S data layers that we could pull into our system and use. So.
Okay, who does, question, how does the maintenance and, and update occur within, within the county family?
Well, if you mean the actual technical, how the technical part is handled.
Yeah, you mentioned that, that the, the, the maps are updated once a year, looked at once a year. There's various parts of the overlays that are updated.
Right, the county's IT Services Department handles most of that. And when we want changes to this Planning G I S application, they are the ones who actually make those changes for us. So one of the changes, for instance, that they're working on right now is to add a feature where instead of the parcel number, we could just type in the address and find this information. So that's something that we put a work order into that department and they take care of it for us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm still here. I forgot to mention, I'm doing three presentations this morning.
Excuse me, Tricia, could you put those mics together a little closer and stand? Thank you very much.
There, hopefully that's better. Okay, well, we wanted to give you a tour of the Planning Division website. There are a lot of resources here. I don't know to what extent you're familiar with the fact that last year we did a major overhaul and revamp of the website. We essentially completely changed the design of it. We essentially completely changed the design of it to try and make it more user-friendly for someone from the outside. And we also changed the content. We added, we took out content, we updated content, we, we made supplemental kinds of changes to it and added content. And so the website you're looking at now is significantly different from the one that we had a year ago. This went, this particular one went live in August of last year. So if you haven't had a chance to maneuver around it, this will give you sort of an overview of what we have here. The first thing I want to point out is that one of the things that we did was we changed the way the navigation occurs. So if you look at this left sidebar, and let's hope this is gonna work. Oh. My mistake. That was my mistake, sorry. We have something called Cascading Navigation on the website. So when you just hover over this, like Frequently Asked Questions, then it gives you a drop-down menu. And you can maneuver around it by, by clicking on, on any of these pages. And some of them have multiple pages. So for instance, county ordinances, you know, Planning Division ordinances, and then it kind of, so it's called Cascading Navigation. And so that was one of the improvements that we made. We also have these buttons on the right-hand side for things. Usually, these change out. This, in fact, this Census 2010 button is brand-new. This was just put on either yesterday or the day before. I just noticed it yesterday myself. So this is something because the Census Bureau has asked us to provide information to the public on their activities as they prepare for the Census 2010. And so they've given us, they have even sent us this PDF that talks about an address canvassing, which is what they're doing right now. And so we've put information on there and we will continue to update this website and provide more information as we get closer to the actual census date. We also have the ability for someone to contact us or to get information in Spanish because that seems very important, given the population of Ventura County. We've tried to personalize it a bit by adding pictures of staff and, and other things within the website. None of that existed previously. We also have down here on the bottom, much like, I mean, many websites have this, where sort of on this bottom toolbar, it continues from page to page. And you have the ability to click on either About Us, How Are We Doing?, which just gives you a customer service survey. Or to Contact Someone gives you the Staff Directory and tells you what the, each staff person's role is in the Planning Division and gives their phone number. So About Us, we even have a nice staff photo here. We have our mission statement, a history of the Planning Division. We have our organizational chart. And this is by function. There are two organizational charts on here. Actually, one is by function and one actually shows the people that take care of all of these functions. So this gives someone a broad overview of, you know, what, what exactly, how are we organized as an organization in the Planning Division? So this shows all of their various programs that are handled by the different managers within the, within the Planning Division. There's also a site map down here, which a lot of websites have. So if you were trying to find something and you'd seen it before and you weren't sure where it was, you could just scroll down here quickly and look for it. In the same vein, we have a search tool. So, and the search is powered by Google, but just for our website. So when you were, if you were to type in a, maybe type in hours, and hopefully it'll give us a list of pages that show us the Planning Division hours. It's working. There we go. Well, I don't want to belabor that too much. There we go. So here we go. So this shows us, you know, it gives, it gave us 10, 10 hits on that particular topic, all from our website. It looks like they... That's interesting. Oh, that's because, okay. We, we mention our hours on different pages. So we mention it here in this context because we're talking about what is the application review process and we're letting people know what are the hours they can come in and submit their applications. So that's why that's popping up there. One of, maybe one of the, the more important features is this Frequently Asked Questions dropdown. Because what we did was we talked to a number of planners and the planning staff out at the counter and we asked them, what are the questions that you get asked over and over again? And we wanted to make those readily available so people didn't have to call in and leave a message and wait for someone to call them back. And so that's what you see here. So we have everything from, you know, do you have any jobs or internships, to how do I file a complaint? What can I do on my property? What is the application review process? And what's my zoning? That's, this is a great tool for anyone. That's probably the most asked question. Realtors call in and ask that question, property owners call in and ask that question. So if I type in the parcel that we looked at a moment ago... And I know not everybody knows their parcel number by heart. So there is the ability to go to the Tax Assessor's website and find out what your parcel number is so that you can come back here and then plug it in. So this pops up with a map that shows the parcel and then has the, has the zoning right across it. Eventually. So every network connection's different. Here we go. I can assure you that on our desktop upstairs, it does move a lot faster. There we go. So this is what anybody can see, you know, just coming onto our website. They can find out what the zoning is for their parcel. And it actually shows the surrounding zoning as well. So it's there. And it's a great tool. Another frequently asked question is recently approved and pending planning projects. So that's something that people ask about a lot for a variety of reasons. And this is something that we started putting up on our website, I believe, last summer. And it's updated monthly, the first week of the month. And it includes, so if you were to look at recently approved projects, it's a report that's done by one of our staff. And it shows projects that have been approved within the last six months. So, and it tells you that it, that this, this particular report is current as of, you know, April 30th. And what it does is it shows you the case planner, it gives you the project description. And in, in detail, this is straight out of our permitting database. So they're able to basically capture that information out of our permitting database and, and put it, plug it into an Excel document and then attach it as a report here on our website. Tells you the, you know, general location, Ojai area, Mission Rock area, address, if we have that, the date it was filed, the type of permit, and then the date it was approved. And then a phone number for the case planner. So if you want to call the case planner, you can. Same thing is true for our Pending Projects Report, except that it's much longer because it shows everything that's in process. And some of them have long descriptions, so you have to kind of scroll through. But it is a way for the public to be aware of what it is that we're doing in the Planning Division. So. And then another fun one is how do I lower my project review costs? Everybody would like to know that. So what we've done, to be proactive, is come up with our own 12 ways of lowering project review costs, you know, for the potential applicant. And so they can at least scroll through this and get an idea of, okay. They can, you know, review the website, look at ordinances and general plan and area plan policies to see if there's something that impacts their project site. They can go through the Frequently Asked Questions or our Public Information Brochures, which I'll get to in just a moment. They can check with other county agencies regarding their requirements. They can look at what the specific requirements are for site plans that are submitted for residential or commercial projects. And here's a good one. Talk to your neighbors to inform them of your project and make sure they understand it. Public controversy may significantly increase processing time and cost. So that just gives them an FYI right off the bat. So that's kind of a fun one. So moving down this left sidebar, under Planning Programs, and we do have, actually, I'll stop here on permit applications for a moment. If someone were to submit an application, we've made an attempt to have all the different types of applications, at least the general applications listed here, so that they could get the information that they needed. So if I were to click on discretionary permits, it talks about what is a discretionary permit? We try to define that for people. And then wherever we have a public brochure, like this one is a summary of new procedures and assistance for discretionary permits. It has the application form here, talks about new procedures, which we'll actually be talking to you about in my next presentation. Then it has the initial study assessment guidelines that Bruce went over. And then the different application types. So sometimes they're just general, commercial, and industrial. And for some, we've created, because they come in so frequently and have some specific requirements, like wireless communication facilities or mining operations, they're just sort of different animals. We've created special applications for those so we can collect the information we need right at the outset from the applicant. So we have that for both discretionary and ministerial permits. So we have, we have a lot of, you know, film permits coming through, tree permits coming through. But this is also information if you were wanting to do a patio cover or a home addition or a second dwelling unit. And we've tried to, to the extent we can, provide information that's basic information for folks on those particular issues. Because those are the ones, we, what we did was we identified what are the structures that most often come in over the counter for zoning clearance. And for those, we've identified specific information for the, for the applicants. So if they, if they care to, they can look at our website ahead of time. Under Planning Programs, we have everything from the Cultural Heritage Board to the Condition Compliance Program. We have the Land Conservation Act Program, Housing Programs, Mobile Home Park Rent Review. So all of that is listed here. And so each of these has a, has a description of what that program is. So here it, you know, what it is that we're trying to do. We're trying to, you know, preserve and protect the history and culture and natural resources of special historical aesthetic character or interest in Ventura County. And then wherever there's information, they do have, they do have meetings with the Cultural Heritage Board. So there, there's a page that talks about the members and some of the information they have. And in some cases, they have some, they've done surveys of certain areas so they can talk about, people can look up those surveys and find out what are historical resources in that particular area. What we've done over the last, you know, year or year and a half is to take all of the documents that previously were only in paper and accessible to our planners, and we've tried to scan them in, create PDFs, and attach them as PDFs to our website so that the general public would have that, that information as well. So. The general plan that Bruce discussed earlier is, is here. So anyone, and what I love about having it on the website, I have to say, if you were to go, and I'll, I'll pick one of the area plans because they're shorter and they won't stop our network. But so here are all the area plans for the county, plus a map showing us where those are located. And if we were to click on the map, it would, I'm not sure it's gonna do anything at the moment because of this connection. But if you were to click on the map, it would show you the exact area that's covered by each of the area plans within the general plan. So if I, if I click on the Ojai Valley Area Plan, I can pull that up, but because it's in Adobe as a PDF, and I'm thinking about, okay, are there any scenic resources? I can just type that in and do a search, and then I can find out all the places where it mentions scenic resources and get to exactly what I'm looking for. And so that's, to me, the major benefit of having it online and easily accessible. And the same would be true for the public if they're looking for something specific, you know, if they wanted to find out about biological resource protection in the Ojai. And the same is true for the county ordinances which are listed here. We have our non-coastal zoning ordinance, our coastal zoning ordinance, as well as our subdivision ordinance. And I can't tell you how many times I go to the website and I'm looking for something specific, and it's just, it's now become almost easier, easier in the digital age to just, you know, type in a keyword and look for it. So maybe it'll become a handicap in the future, but right now it seems to be working. So that's the basic benefit of having them there. And then also, they're available for the public so they can look up. If they're wanting to do a second dwelling unit, they can pull that ordinance up and print out those pages and take a look at what their requirements are. We also have conservation tools, which, again, this is related to some of the, the data layers and information we have on our Planning GIS system that we're able to provide, information that we're able to provide here, to the extent feasible, we've added to our website for people. So because we've done some mapping and some exploration of what those resources are, they are now, they are now here, sometimes in the form of a report. There's a permitting guide that was, that was developed by one of our planners. It's very extensive. It talks about if you're trying to create a permit and if you're trying to construct a project and it's in a wetland area, what you need to do and all the permits with all of the different agencies, with Fish and Game and Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the Planning Division. And this one is really actually a great one. I don't know if you've ever been here, but under green building, we have a Build It Smart website, which was created by a grant the Planning Division received about two years ago. We hired consultants, and this is a great website for anyone who is doing new construction to try and take a look and see how they can make it more energy efficient. And there are all kinds of, you know, tools and information here. And this was created by the Planning Division. So this is definitely a resource that we, we actually, I think we advertise it out at our front counter. We try to get our planners to let the applicants know about this when they're doing the design phase of their project. Their energy smart design ideas, smart cooling, solar energy. There's a lot of information that's here. And even, you know, mention some of the free design assistance that's available through the Ventura County Energy Resource Center, which is just across the street. So. Sequo environmental review. This is also something that people access frequently. They want to find out which environmental documents are currently available for public comment. And so we list all of those here. Again, that's something we didn't have until last summer. So it was part of this update to the website to provide all of those. Of course, we, you know, we noticed them and we put them out at the public counter, but the website is just something that makes it a lot more, it's just more accessible to more people. And so we have the actual environmental documents here. People can open them up, they can look through them, they can do the same search function that I showed you a moment ago because they're all in PDF. And they can actually look at an archive of approved environmental documents. And if there were any scoping meetings for an EIR or anything of that nature, then that would show up here as well. Meetings and agendas. You go to Planning Commissioners. Here we go. So obviously, we're gonna be updating this particular page in the very near future. And your Planning Commissioner Handbook is here. So that's something, you know, if you were trying to find it and, or you're trying to look something up and you're away from your home or you don't have it on hand, you could easily look it up here and on the website. This is also where we have, whoops, let's go back here to Meetings and Agendas under Planning Director, Planning Commission Hearings, we have the Live Broadcast and Video Archive. So this is where if we wanted to, we could, I could see myself presenting to you, or I could look at some of the older hearings that are here and the agendas and the minutes that are all posted here. So it looks like it goes back to May of 2006, which is probably when we started putting them on our website. So in these two, we have some planning reports and studies that have been done in the past that seem like they might be useful as research tools. We have census and demographic information. And then we also have, in this last category, all of our public information brochures, of which there are many. And we are, we are, we are consistently updating them and adding more. And they are found as well up at our front counter, but this, again, allows it to have a wider distribution. So there's everything here from, you know, our Civil Administration Penalty Program to how can I split my lot? Frequently Asked Questions about the LCA program, Mobile Home Park Rent Review, the Ojai Valley Clean Air Ordinance. What is planning? What is an ill-able lot? What to ask before buying vacant land? There's an important question. And then some of our frequently requested information is down here as well, including our planning fee schedule. So the only other thing I was gonna show you is just that this, there's an RMA home, so that's for the entire Resource Management Agency. So if you're curious about what the other divisions within the Resource Management Agency were doing, you can access their websites as well, including our New Code Compliance Division, which is comprised of both the code enforcement officers that used to be in the Planning Division and code enforcement officers that were in the Building and Safety Division. And they've now created their own Code Compliance Division effective March 1st. And so they've got their own website with their own complaint forums and information. And so that's just something that, that's available as well. And this up here, this toolbar up here, this is the county's portal. And so you can actually, this has the information that links to all, all kinds of other county departments and agencies. And so those can also be accessed on our website. So that gives you a basic overview of what we have here. I don't know if anyone had any questions on the website.
Questions? I, I have one. As you mentioned, the county's new code enforcement section. How do, how do their activities or, or pending actions or decisions interface with the parcel numbers or the addresses?
Their decisions? I'm sorry.
For example, if somebody wants to, wants to do a partial tear down on a address, a residence, and there's prior list or prior code enforcement issues there that haven't been addressed yet or something, how, how do the two interact?
Well, the...
If it comes to you in planning.
Right. No, yeah, let's say we received an application for a permit. Typically, at the front counter... Typically, at the front counter, as soon as they pull up that parcel, they can see there's a notice that comes up in our Permits Plus database that shows that there's a violation on that site.
Okay.
So they would know to go contact that code enforcement officer.
So right at the front door when they come in, in essence, okay.
They're not allowed to submit an application for a new entitlement unless that application abates the violation as well. So they can't come in for something different if we know there's a violation on that property until that, until they're concurrently abating the existing violation.
Thank you, that was a great presentation.
Okay.
You gotten a lot of hits on that website?
You know, I haven't done that research. I should do that, yeah. I'd be curious myself. So my last presentation to you of the day is on the Lean Six Sigma process and the discretionary permit process, and essentially how those two have kind of intertwined. And I don't know to what degree the five of you are familiar with Lean Six Sigma as an improvement tool. Okay, good, because I did provide some basic information on what that is to get started. I think I'll use these arrow keys. So in a few sentences, Lean Six Sigma is an improvement tool that functions by increasing efficiency and improving the process through increasing consistency and improving the process flow. Essentially, it's two different tools. It's lean and then it's six sigma. And six sigma was started way back in the 1980s, I shouldn't say way back. It was started in the late 1980s in Japan by Toyota and Motorola, and it's simply, it's an improvement tool. So what it looks at is, essentially it was for manufacturing and decreasing the number of defects. And you can imagine if you're, if you're manufacturing a car, you don't want it to have a lot of defects in the end. And so it was a tool that was used to decrease that ratio of defects, and it was based on statistical methods. And so they were able to use statistical methods. That's where six sigma comes from, the idea of a sigma being one standard deviation from the mean. And apparently, the ideal would be to have six standard deviations away from the mean. This is all sort of in a statistical sense. And so all that they're talking about when they say six sigma is decreasing variation. So they want it to be, they want that to be consistent and not to have as much variation. So the quality should be consistent, the product that comes out should be consistent. When they talk about lean, which is something that was sort of added in more recently, and then the two were sort of combined, because they're both improvement tools that were used by managers in a variety of different industry sectors, and lean combined with six sigma, it talks about more the flow. So it's talking about the flow and how can you increase the speed of the flow and maintain the quality. So if you look at this particular graphic, it shows what lean brings to the table, which is an understanding of the process flow and where there might be areas that are ripe for improvement to increase efficiency. And then there are a number of activities that are done in order to accomplish that, and I'm going to go through some of those, including value stream mapping. And they're looking at ways that you can make improvements quickly. So what are things, they look at both sort of long-term, but they also look at what are the things that you can do right away that are going to make an improvement in terms of that efficiency. So the emphasis is on the standardization and the speed and efficiency. When you look at six sigma, it's much more about what is the data? You know, what are the metrics that we can produce that show where we have some issues and where things aren't consistent? And how can we decrease that inconsistency? How can we decrease that variation? And then going into the future, what are ways we can continue to look at that? We can continue to look at that data and make sure that what we've implemented as an improvement tool is working. And so it's very focused on data. It's not just about guesswork or what people might think. It's very focused on what is the data showing us and how are we going to improve a particular system or process moving forward? So that's a general overview, and the idea being that there would be a lot of savings involved in this. So you can see in the manufacturing industry, this clearly equates to, you know, fewer customer complaints and a better product that's being produced, and so that is savings for the automobile industry. And then I'll go into how that sort of applies to the planning discretionary permit process in just a moment. This just gives you an idea of some of the industry sectors that have implemented Lean Six Sigma. I mentioned that it started with Toyota and Motorola in the late 80s. It's now being applied sort of across the board. I mean, there are long lists of companies that are implementing it, including Amazon.com, Fort Wayne, Indiana, the US Air Force, Navy, and Marines all implement Lean Six Sigma on a regular basis and claim to have, you know, major cost savings as a result of it. One of the mantras of Lean Six Sigma is how can we delight the customer? So when you think about it in those terms, they spend a lot of time defining who is the customer, and they have a very broad-based approach to who the customer is. So if you think about it in planning terms, you know, maybe our immediate response would be the customer is the applicant bringing in the permit, right? So the permit is sort of like our widget or our automobile that we're trying to increase efficiency and consistency on. And so how can, how can we, you know, maybe broaden that definition to include other customers? So for us with planning, that might include the Board of Supervisors, it might include the Planning Commission, it might include, you know, the consultants we're working with as we go through the planning process. So the idea of customer is broadened, and then how can we delight that customer? By providing them a service, or in this case, a permit, that is produced more quickly and is more consistent as far as its, you know, application over time. So some of the key areas of Lean Six Sigma are who is your customer, is your service improving, have you measured improvement, and then this whole idea of showing me the data. So it's not, like I said, just based on guesswork or assumptions, it's really based on the data. So we did a lot of work to try and look at, you know, what the data might be before we got started with this process. So how did we get to applying Lean Six Sigma, a terminology that we never even heard ago, a year ago, to our discretionary permit process? Well, there was a report that was prepared by Tom Berg, the former Resource Management Agency Director, and presented to the Board of Supervisors last April. And Tom Berg, in response to some complaints from people who had gone through the discretionary permit process at the county, interviewed dozens and dozens of county employees and applicants and their consultants, and produced this report that essentially talked about some of the systemic issues with discretionary permit processing. And it wasn't just, you know, it wasn't focused on the Planning Division, it was really discretionary permit process, which includes at least 11 different departments and divisions within the county in order to get a permit through. So when he did that, the Board appointed a management committee and tasked them with looking at that process and looking at that report and determining how we're going to address some of those issues that had come up, and how we're going to improve that process, that discretionary permit process. And because, I think, you know, one of the reasons why Lean Six Sigma may have been chosen as a tool is because it does cross agency boundaries. And so it's not as simple as just sitting down with a room of planners and figuring out how we're going to improve the process. This really demanded that we communicate with the other agencies, which wasn't necessarily occurring as well as it should have been. So Lean Six Sigma was, it was a new tool, it was an opportunity to implement something that had been, had been tried by a couple other agencies and was apparently showing to be successful. And so the, we were asked by this management committee to create what they call a value stream analysis team. And you're going to hear kind of a lot of terminology, I'll try to define it as I go along, but there are, this value stream analysis, the idea behind it is that you're looking at, you're looking at your process flow. And what are the inputs to that process flow, and then what are the outputs of it? And so in simpler terms, we assemble, we assemble the subject matter experts. Who are the people that are involved in approving a discretionary permit? So when we talk about discretionary permit, we're talking about some of the permits that you see here at the Planning Commission. We're not talking about over the counter permit for a single-family home that happens at the planning counter. We're talking about CUPs, you know, modifications to CUPs, and zoning amendments, and general plan amendments, and those kinds of things. Those are the kinds of things that take longer, you know, and they often involve an environmental document, and there's much more input from the other agencies as far as that process is concerned. So the subject matter experts included at least one representative, in many cases more than one, from each of the divisions or departments that's involved in that discretionary permit process. So every time, you know, a department touches that discretionary permit, then they were, that department was asked to come and sit at the table. So we were all assembled around a table. And so you can see that there are 11 different departments represented here, including the Agricultural Commissioners Office, it should be APCD, and then several from the Watership Protection District and the Public Works Agency. The champions of this, and they have, you know, considering that it came from Japan, it's probably not surprising that they created this sort of this infrastructure and way of describing Lean Six Sigma that relies on karate terminology. So we have, yeah, so we have yellow belts, green belts, black belts, and master black belts that are involved in this whole thing. And those essentially show the leadership. So the longer that you've been involved and the more training you have, you're going to end up being a black belt or a master black belt. I'm still at the little white belt, yellow belt stage myself, but there are some in the county that have been trained to be at these higher levels. And so we had, our champions were Matt Carroll and Chris Stevens, who functioned as sort of the upper management to support those that were the subject matter experts as we went through this process. The leads were Kim and myself. And then we had, we were very fortunate to have a green belt who was actually consultant and very knowledgeable, and I think she's actually a black belt, and then Elaine Crandall, who's now in the CEO's office. So that was really the team that was assembled. And the whole idea here is that rather than have it be upper management telling the employees, okay, we need to change this and this and this, it's to get the people in the room who actually do the work and have them brainstorm and think about what are solutions? What are the problems, define the problems, and what are the solutions that we can come up with? Which is, you know, that's very different. So we had this value stream analysis, which was actually, it was a four day, full four days. So everyone's asked to cancel everything, there are no meetings, you're supposed to turn off your cellphone, and you're in a room together for four straight days. So, and that's what they typically call a kaizen event. A kaizen event is usually one week in length, and it's really this focusing on one problem by all the parties that are involved in it. And so that allows you to do quite a bit of work that it simply would never be accomplished if you're having meetings once a month, you know, for a couple of hours. And so before this value stream analysis, we created metrics. We looked at, we did a lot of, we ran a lot of reports out of our Permits Plus system to see when was it in the discretionary permit process that things were sort of slowed down, or where could we identify some of the problem areas before we actually went into this value stream analysis? So one of the things that we identified was that there were a lot of projects, discretionary projects, that were incomplete. So incomplete for longer periods of time. And that incompleteness is simply in that first 30-day review, a project comes in the door, and within 30 days, we're supposed to say, is it complete or incomplete? Based on what they've submitted to us. You know, did they submit us everything that we need, and not just planning, but all of the other departments, that we need to make an assessment about the project and figure out what the environmental document is going to be? So that was sort of the area that we honed in on as part of this value stream analysis. And that also coincides with the area that involves all of the other agencies, because we send out a project distribution to all of these other agencies, the other 11 individuals involved, and they review it based on their codes, you know, they have their own ordinances, you know, so it could be someone from the Fire Protection District looking at it from a fire code perspective and trying to decide if there's the appropriate fire access and sprinkling and everything involved. And so essentially, we created, we created, we had these metrics, and then we brought everyone together in the room. And then we use what they call value stream mapping tools. So the first thing that you do is you create a current state map. And the current state map shows what is the process as it exists today. So you, you know, project comes into planning, and then we send it out to these other 11 departments, and then they review it using their codes, and then they send it back to us saying, yes, it's complete, or no, it's not, and it needs X, Y, and Z. And so we looked at that, and that's the simplified version of what's occurring, because in each department, it also might pass through three managers and come back down again. So it's, you know, it's sort of a simplified version of how it's done. But we did sort of, everyone created their own maps of how it happens in their particular division, and then we put them all together and we look at them, you know. We cover the walls of the entire room with maps, you know, with these big-sized maps and post-it notes and everything else. And so that shows us, okay, what is it like today? Now, we can brainstorm how are ways that we can improve it for the future? And so we try to create an ideal state map. That means if I were queen for a day, what would I want this, you know, process to look like? And so we create our ideal state map based on that, and then we create a future state map, which is kind of, okay, come back down to reality. And we have to take a lunch break in between, but, you know, we have to come back down to reality and look, okay, what, we don't have unlimited resources or unlimited staffing, so what are things that would be realistic as far as creating a future state map? And so we do that, or we did that, as part of this value stream analysis, and then we created what's called a Get to Excellence Plan. And that was just, that's more like our action plan of how we're going to implement all the solutions that we identified. So we identified the problems, and then we identified the solutions. These are just some photos of the actual value stream analysis. This is the mapping exercise. You can see how there is, you know, the big poster paper across the walls there and all the post-it notes that I was talking about that get moved along. And we usually have, you know, different, different people got up and did different presentations as we went along. This is Public Works, and that's actually, those are actually circle maps that they're presenting, and those circle maps are somewhat interesting. They showed how many times a project changed hands when it came into their department. So you can see how, you see how some of these, you know, are showing how it's just bouncing around all over the place? That means that's how many times, just to do a review of the project and get it back to planning, that's how many times it changed hands within that department. So those were very revealing. So when they added them all up for Public Works and they had it, you know, a project changing hands, I can't remember what the number was, you Kim, it was some extraordinary number, and it was like 70 times or something before it came back to planning. You know, that was very revealing. It was very, I mean, it was amazing to be in a room and understand what was happening in those other, in those other agencies, because to me, that had been a black box before. You know, it's like, we send it out and then it comes back, and I really didn't know what was happening in between. That is our actual Get to Excellence Plan that was developed. And of course, you can't read that, I don't expect you to. I'm going to go over what some of the items were that were on our Get to Excellence Plan, but that's essentially what it looks like. So there were 23 items on that plan that you just saw. 10 of them were just do-its. That means 10 of them were items where, basically the decision was, you know, you just need to go out and get it done as quickly as possible. The idea ideally would be that you have it done within the first 30 days after the plan was adopted. So, and that might, you know, that might, typically those aren't the items that require big meetings or subcommittees or that sort of thing, but they're items where, you know, just go out and just do it. And then there were eight projects, and projects are sort of longer-term things, the things that are going to require multiple meetings over many months. For instance, Bruce's update of the Initial Study Assessment Guidelines requires, you know, input from all of the other departments and work, and so that's something that can't be done in 30 days, nor can it be done in a week. So that's considered a project. And then there were five kaizen events that were identified. And the kaizens, again, are like these week-long, you're sequestered in a room, and, you know, you really try to hammer out what are the solutions to problems. So there were 23 items, which we've been working through faithfully since they were approved by the Board. And it's an inter-agency effort, and we did have agreed-upon metrics that we are collecting and we will be analyzing probably on a biannual basis to see how our process improvement is working, so we can see what is the, you know, what's the reward? You know, is there savings in time for the applicant? Is there a savings in money for the Planning Division? What is it that we're able to get out of this process? And then make adjustments as we need to, as we go along. So these are some of the highlights for me. I think one of those was, one of the results, one of the highlights was improved teamwork. So we have much more of a shared sense of vision and mission, I think, between some of the agencies that are involved in the discretionary permit process. Bruce provided the same SEQA and general plan training that you received, he provided to all of these other divisions, and I think he's done it a couple of times, and will continue to do that, because sometimes that particular task is just a little piece of what someone's doing, say, in the, you know, the groundwater division of Public Works, and it might shift from person to person. And so if they don't have the knowledge of SEQA and general plan policies, then it's a lot more difficult. And so we're able to provide training. I think there's a better understanding among other staff and other agencies about what it is that the discretionary process requires, what state law is, what is SEQA that we're required to follow as planners. And then just much better communication and coordination, which I mentioned earlier had been lacking somewhat. And so those are some of the benefits, the improved collaboration and teamwork between agencies. Another highlight were the improved tools, and I actually have, I asked Winston to come. He's our new discretionary permit coordinator. He was one of the first items that we implemented from our Get to Excellence Plan. So this was, yeah, so I've got him here standing here, this is my prop. He's going to talk to you about a couple of the improvement tools that we've been able to implement already as a result of that Get to Excellence Plan. that we've been able to implement already as a result of that get to excellence plan.
Good morning, Chairman Rodriguez and members of the planning commission. As Tricia introduced me, my name is Winston Wright. I've hired as the discretionary permit coordinator. That's another moment, I think, believe that's been discussed. This slide shows the improved tools, one of which was a collaborative effort by all the reviewing agencies to create a roadmap for the customer that was preparing for a discretionary permit application. This is a very comprehensive guide that outlines which requisite documents and studies may be necessary for, as a part of a seminal package to process a discretionary permit. It goes both into the requirements as to what would be needed on a set of plans as also as to the study requirements that would be necessary to submit. And it goes back to trying to be consistent when someone's submitting an application, making sure that we're asking for the same things and being efficient, making sure that we get everything we need upfront. And improve the quality of these applications so they come through and get processed quicker. That was one of the noted improvements that could be, these permits take some time to process. And if we had a similar package that was thorough, it would help speed the process along and in fact, make it less costly for the applicant to process. So with this application, an applicant does not, would not necessarily have to go to each agency. We've created a one-stop application submittal at the planning counter so that the customer can come straight to the planning counter and get some information from myself and the staff in the planning division as to what may be necessary to compile a complete application, what Public Works may need, what environmental health may need. And that is outlining the application package. But they can also come to us and we can, we can go over that information. And if need be, contact those agencies instead of making the applicant do the circle of the various counters to make sure. Now, of course, it doesn't keep the counter, the customer from going to those people if they need additional information or supplemental information. Oftentimes, it is the case they'll still need to go to the other agencies to supplement. But at least there is that one-stop opportunity. And if there is some need for myself to go and get some clarification, I can go directly to the agencies for the customer. And in that application process, we now have a one-stop billing for Public Works. It used to be three separate application packages. Now it's been compiled. I can't remember the number of pages that were, said it was over 150 pages. It's been compressed down to about 50 pages. And I know that still seems very thorough, but not everything applies to every individual type of application. But it's a compressed and condensed and efficient application package. And now the customer can come and pay the bill. Instead of doing three applications, they can come and play the, pay ethic to start their process at the planning counter. Instead of going to both Public Works, Environmental Health, and then to Public, and then to Planning. So this is anticipated to, and I believe in improved customer service. I was hired and started in January. Was given the opportunity to get my feet underneath me and learn some of the process. And was rolled out on March 2nd. The process sort of started out, the single billing, my being available to the customer. Before that, during the first couple of months I was hired, I was able to go to the various agencies and find out what base information they need as part of the submittal process. So I got some training from each of the agencies. And in that, and part of that process was getting together a development review committee, which is compiling a group of eight people in each agency that has reviewing authority for a permit. And having as part of the pre-submittal application process, they could, an applicant comes directly to the DRC, the development review committee, and get input before they come, submit an application. So they know directly what scope of work would be necessary to say, compile a traffic study or what the hydrology report should, you know, include. And the DRC is meant for the more complex application types. Isn't necessarily, necessary for the parcel map wave or more simple application change of use. This is meant for the complex cases where you need input from the various agencies and it helps you put together your application package. In that, in light of that, there is an increase face-to-face in upfront communication with the applicant. The, in preparation to submit an application, I'm available to speak with the customers to compile the information, go over their application package, make sure that everything's together. If they need work on a specific study or haven't addressed a specific issue, I can go to the other agencies and make sure that they need that information. And I can talk to the customer and sort of cut some of the rep tape that has been a part of the complaints in the past is, I'm going to too many people. I'm getting too many stories. This is an effect to be, is implemented to increase efficiency and improve the equality of the applications and the information provided to the applicant. The get to excellent plans items that are still in the process would be to develop the one-stop customer-friendly permit application website that Tricia hit on earlier. Each department is updating and improving the discretionary project review procedures to remove unnecessary overlaps of review. Say, the, you know, waste management may not necessarily need to necessarily look at the dust control issues that could be covered by the air quality, air pollution control agencies, that sort of thing. And Tricia's done an excellent job of moving that along. And we just had a kaizen event earlier this week, which was very productive. And she's bringing that to a close. But the agencies are looking at the, how their review procedures are coming together. And it sort of forces some of the agencies who haven't put together policies and procedures to put some in writing and make sure that there's a consistent review process. And I know that Tricia, if she, if questions for that, she is the specialist in that area. And as Bruce hit on earlier, the county is working, Bruce is working on updating the initial study assessment guidelines. So that when a project comes in, we know specifically when a project crosses a threshold, when something becomes significant, an issue may become significant. Whereas it, in, or it isn't. Hopefully, that's clarified that, you know, through this update, where there was a sort of a gray, you know, line of where, where these projects hit and the significance, it should be clarified a little bit better with this guidance update. And we're going to create a web-based customer service survey. So applicants that are, have submitted or gone through a discretionary permit application, they can get automatically emailed. Please go online, fill out a survey, tell us how you do. So in the effort of process improvement, we can highlight directly from the customer where there needs to be improvement and we can address that and move forward. And future get to excellent items are to develop a standardized project of conditions of approval and mitigation measures. And this is, again, going to the consistency point of making sure that we handle each application and each project consistently and where, and that the conditions are thoroughly thought over and reviewed in situations where there's standard situations where it's always going to be the same sort of scenario. You have to follow up with these type of agencies afterwards. It's, it's clear what the client needs to follow up with. In light of that, that'll also help identify and address roadblocks to a viable condition compliance process. The, the standard conditions and mitigation measures, it clears the path for a seamless condition compliance process. So that's part of the effort in identifying what those roadblocks are. But also, there's another good tactic specific to just finding out how do we make sure we follow up appropriately with permits once they're approved? And then lastly, I'm creating a regular and consultant training, a regular public and consultant training schedule so that people can come and get training for us in specific areas, maybe biology or issues that are coming to light through the land use development issues, so.
That was our last slide. And I know we're short on time. There, and there are other items that are on the actual get to excellence plan. And if anyone would like a copy of that, I'd be happy to provide it to you. Okay, we'll make sure you get a copy of that. I just also wanted to mention that there are some books out there on lean six sigma, which are very helpful if you're interested in that particular improvement tool and want to learn more about it. So this one is by Mike George and Dave Rollins.
Mr. Chair, if I may, while they're changing gears. I want to thank you because one of the champions of interdepartment communications sitting in the back of the room, there's a few of your interdepartment cohorts did not like the fact Mr. Bartels would call them to the meetings. So I just want to thank you for the fact that, Bill, you left too soon.
Thank you. Great presentation. Robert.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Robert Quong, Assistant County Counsel. One of my primary duties as Assistant County Counsel is to advise your commission on legal matters as they come before you. I am only one of two attorneys who are assigned to the planning commission, the other being Linda Ash. And she is responsible for most legal projects that involve the subdivision map act to the general plan and specific plans. I handle most of the CUP and zoning ordinance issues that come before you. We are ably assisted by Roberto Oriana, who has extensive experience in land use matters, as well as Jim Thonis, our litigation supervisor. And of course, our leader up in the county council's office, Noel Claybaum, and his chief assistant, Leroy Smith. So this is a subject matter that is near and dear to my heart. In my years in public services as a government attorney, the idea of good government is key. And government is only as good as the integrity of the people who occupy those offices and carry out the tasks and goals that state law and the constitution require of it. So I'd like to run through my presentation. I'm going to skip over quite a few things because of the time issues involved here. Obviously, I'd like to leave some time at the end for questions. I'd like to begin our, yeah, there you go, topics covered. Legal scope and activity and role of the planning commissioner. Due process requirements and land use hearings. Brown Act over meetings law. The Ventura County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 222/240. It's a, it's a mouthful, but it is an important resolution guiding how land use hearings are to be conducted here in the county of Ventura. And finally, California conflict of interest laws. That in and of itself would take an entire day of discussion, given the Fair Political Practices Act as well as FPPC regulations. So it's only going to be a very short discussion on that. So let's go right into it. Legal scope and activity. The most important thing you need to recognize here is that your role is quasi-judicial. You're an administrative agency who has the power to adjudicate the rights of those who appear before you. It's your actions in this role that are bound by law to observe certain forums and possibly to hold a public hearing. And in your quasi-adjudicatory role, it's good to know, and we have two attorneys sitting on our planning commission here, to understand that you're sitting as judges. And as matters come before you, facts are presented from differing sides and from different places and different perspectives. It's your job to judge those facts, given the law that is on the books guiding your decision-making role. So it's very important to understand that your role is as a judge. It's not as an advocate. It is not as an interested party. It is as a judge. And so you ought to take this role as a quasi-judicial decision-makers very seriously. And that's usually what you have in all of your discretionary permits that come before you. Those are quasi-judicial roles. You do have a limited, excuse me, a limit, yeah, a limited quasi-legislative role in that you do involve yourselves in some rulemaking. And that's only when it gets to the place of amending the zoning ordinance or making recommendations with regards to the planning, excuse me, the general plan. That's quasi-legislative. And you see that quite often, but it's not as important as what I'm thinking will be the bulk of my comments on the quasi-judicial role of the planning commissioner. Due process requirements and land use hearings. Citizens of the state, this is almost a civics lessons, are entitled to due process before the government or a governmental agency that deprives that citizen of life, liberty, or property. That's just basic constitutional law that's in our Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments. Due process requires notice of intended action. We see a lot of that in all of our laws in the government code that deal with land use hearings. We see that in the Brown Act and we see that in SEQA. It's all about notice, telling people what is going to happen. And if people don't know what's going to happen, they can't get involved. And so notice is very important. Case law is all over on that. Very important Horn case that you're familiar with requires notice. Opportunity to prepare. So not only do you give notice, but there should be time to prepare for the intended action that's going to come before the decision-making body. It's not good enough to say a day before. By the way, we're going to take up your matter on a major subdivision or planning development problem, and you only have 24 hours to prepare. This is not an ex parte type of a speed hearing or anything like that. And those opportunities and time periods are set forth by state law. Opportunity to be heard. And you provide that at every single opportunity that there is this type of a hearing. You give an opportunity to each side to present their case in sufficient time to do so, given all the other issues that you have before you. Fair process or a fair and impartial hearing. That's what's required of you in a due process type of land use hearings. And finally, a public hearing. To be advertised so that anyone can come in and view what's going on here at the planning commission. There's key words of transparency and being out there, but the public hearing is designed to do that. One need only go back to, you know, the early parts of American history to understand why these things are so important. There was a time in, in, in America when these things were not guaranteed and not provided. And therefore, the founders of our country have made sure that these key aspects of due process are found in our constitution and they filter themselves down through state law and then local ordinance. Public expectation that you will be impartial and avoid favoritism. That's one of the first aspects of what is called a fair process, okay? There's an expectation that you're going to be impartial and avoid favoritism. And that's, again, goes to the integrity of government and the integrity of your decision. Another thing about fair process is that you should be keeping an open mind about the issue that's before you, not to form or express an opinion about a matter that's going to come before you until after you've heard all of the evidence. So it's really important there to come to the hearing with that open mind, with an understanding that you will be receiving evidence that goes to your decision-making process there. Obviously, this is an ideal situation. We're human beings. And it's very difficult to have this through that process. But that's the expectation that people have when they come before the planning commission or any adjudicatory body, is that they have an open mind to receive the information on both sides. Another is that as a public official, you're bound to serve with disinterested skill, zeal, and diligence primarily for the benefit of the public. We talked a lot about what's our, who's our customer? Who's your customer? Your customer is the public. The public at large is not any one entity, any one cause, or any one idea. It's the public at large. And that is, in a sense, as public officials, who we are, public servants, public officials. Avoid ex parte contacts. Ex parte in Latin means from the part or out of one part. Ex parte contacts are basically receiving information from only one part of an entire story. So if you only took information from the respondent or the petitioner, that would be an ex parte contact. You're only getting one side of the story. And that would be an ex parte contact that should be avoided. You should avoid factual bias, favoring one fact over another. Facts ought to be weighed and not to be favored one over the other until such time as you receive that. And obviously, to avoid the people bias. Decisions ought to be merit-based and not based upon personal relationships or other interests. Oftentimes, being a, being a county of Ventura, this is a small county. People know each other. And, you know, growing up in Los Angeles County, there's an opportunity to practice law in LA County where you'll never see that other attorney again for the rest of your life. Here, most likely, you will see that person again and again and again. And so people bias is oftentimes easily developed. But again, we ought to avoid those. And that is part of a fair process in a, in a due process land use hearing. Okay, now let me switch gears and give, that was kind of an overview of what is required of you. And it's really important to keep in mind those foundational, constitutional, statutory goals that we have to provide due process and to make the government process something that has a lot of int- something that has a lot of integrity, validity, credibility, and defensibility. Brown Act open meetings laws. I'm going to go through these very quickly because some of you know these very well already. First thing is that an open meeting requirement provides only legal minimums to ensure that the public is fully informed about local decisions. Again, this whole idea of the people who we govern need to know what is going on. There's a constitutional amendment that was passed only two years ago that expands the interpretation and application of the Brown Act so that it is to be liberally interpreted and applied to give the fairest and fullest measure of public information. Facilitate public participation, curbs misuse of the democratic process. First key thing you need to know is what is a meeting? It's any situation involving a majority of the decision-making body in which business is transacted or discussed, whether by telephone, email, Twitter, coffee shop, whatever the case might be, even over something as simple as Starbucks and coffee. You will be going, possibly all five of you, to a luncheon later today. If you sit at the table, you are not to conduct business. You can talk about many other things, but not conduct business because there is a majority of you there. If only three of you are there at this luncheon today, you still cannot. That would constitute a meeting because that's a quorum of the five-member board, and you cannot discuss business in that type of a setting. A serial meeting. That's a series of communications that result in a majority conferring on an issue. That is to be avoided at all costs, and it's oftentimes very tricky of a situation, but I'll just give you one common instance. There is one person who begins the communication. Let's say Commissioner One calls up Commissioner Two and says, "And that's okay? That's okay?" Commissioner One can talk to Commissioner Two, and they talk about it, all right? Commissioner One, based on that conversation, goes to Commissioner Three and says, "Hey, guess what Commissioner One and Two and I talked about? Don't you agree with me, Commissioner Three?" Commissioner Three says, "Yes." Bingo. Serial meeting. Because you have created a situation and a series of communications where a majority has been done. So, the next day, when you come into the Planning Commission, you know the three of you agree on that issue, and that was taken outside of a public meeting, and that is a violation of the Brown Act. Post and follow the agenda. The agenda requirement is very key, and again, it goes to giving people notice of the intended action. Seventy-two hours before the date of the meeting, there's to be posted an agenda, and only those items that are clearly identified on the agenda are to be acted upon. Now, oftentimes, people say, "Well, is it within the scope of the description?" And that's really staff's role, working with the clerk and making clear that the item is clearly identified and described so that anyone who is interested in that matter knows what's going to be discussed, and that the discussion will be limited to that item and not go far afield. And that is an area that certain policing has to be done, either self-policing and knowing that you can't go beyond the scope of the agenda, and that's why counsel is here as well. So, complexity to the Brown Act, and I've just given you really a kind of a jet tour through the Brown Act there, and the consequences for violating it oftentimes necessitates legal counsel to get involved and to look into the fine points. There are many exceptions to these rules. I haven't even talked about closed session. I haven't talked about the consequences of violation, making those decisions null and void, but note that the Brown Act is key to, again, the due process aspect of a land use hearing. Resolution 222/240. This was adopted in 1976 by the Board of Supervisors to govern the conduct of hearings of land use matters before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. There's only two bodies it applies to, Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. It is, to a great extent, an extension of Government Code 65804, which requires every jurisdiction to adopt procedural rules for the conduct of land use hearings. Defensibility of any legal decision that you do is based upon what Bruce had talked about earlier today, about making findings for certain decisions about the facts, given the law that is governing that matter, and making sure that those findings support the decision that you as a body make. And so, legal defensibility goes to this strength and the integrity, again, of the facts and the law of the findings that you make. Case law says that administrative agencies, decision-making bodies, are required in their findings to bridge the analytic gap between the raw evidence and the facts and the ultimate decision or the order that is granted or issued, in a way that describes the analytic route from evidence to action. And in order to do that, it is important to then know exactly what facts you have on hand and the law that is applied, and then make that decision based upon it, and so that everybody knows about it. So, this is a very basic concept of findings and defensibility that need to be part of the thinking anytime you do that. And this is right out of case law, the DePanga Association for City and Community case. It's a key case out of the California Supreme Court, talking about making sufficient findings. More about defensibility. We talked about legal challenge to your decisions, and usually, it's done through a writ of mandate proceeding. I'm not going to get into a lot about writs at this point in time, but know that there is a Code of Civil Procedure section, 1094.5, that governs how people can challenge administrative decisions, let's say, from the Planning Commission or from the Board of Supervisors. And what does that law say, and how does that apply to this resolution on conduct of hearings? It applies like this. "The inquiry in such a case shall extend to the questions whether respondent has proceeded respondent," usually the government agency, "without or in excess of jurisdiction," and these are the key terms, "whether there was a fair trial." Again, was there fair process given there? The courts will look at, was there notice? Was there time to prepare? Was there time to be heard? Was there time for rebuttal? And whether there was any prejudicial abuse of discretion by that agency. An abuse of discretion is defined as if the respondent agency has not proceeded in a manner required by law, the order of decision is not supported by findings, or the findings are not supported by the evidence. Again, evidence, findings, and how they're supported and how they are communicated in the process of a land use hearing is important, and that is what the courts are going to be looking at if, in fact, actions are challenged. And that is out of, again, another case, Break Zone Billiards versus the City of Torrance, where that standard was reiterated, and you'll see it again in many, many cases involving writ proceedings, this very standard that's set forth in the Code of Civil Procedures. So, I'm going to run through basically kind of a syllogism about how this whole findings fits in with evidence. Findings must be made by the quasi-judicial body as part of its determination of whether to grant or deny a CUP. Findings must be supported by substantial evidence in light of the entire record. Trial and appellate court review and scrutiny of a CUP decision is based upon the record of evidence in support of findings. Therefore, it's crucial that your CUP decision be made on evidence that is clearly, fully, publicly disclosed and contained in the administrative record before you for that case. This all leads up to a particular section within Resolution 222/240. That's in Section B, Paragraph 11, "Information obtained outside public hearing." So, that was kind of a vestibule discussion to get into the living room now. And the living room discussion will talk about information obtained outside the public hearing. It's in your materials. "No member of a hearing body shall solicit or receive evidence outside of a public hearing on a matter for which the public hearing is required by state law or county ordinance." So, we start off with a prohibition. "No member of a hearing body shall solicit or receive evidence outside the public hearing." Your staff has just explained all the tools that they have at their disposal to make sure that their preparation of the matter that comes before you has all the sufficient information to it. So, you saw whiz-bang tools from GIS overlays to different layers and information, and that's all designed to bring into the hearing room the relevant evidence about that particular matter. Now, the opponents and proponents of that project will also bring evidence into the courtroom or into the hearing room for you to receive and consider as a part of your decision-making body, decision-making, and it's all in that public hearing. Two responsibilities then. Knowing that that is a primary prohibition not to solicit or receive, there's a negative and positive responsibility for members of a hearing body. One, the negative. "You shall avoid personal contacts, correspondence, and telephone calls concerning substantive issues relating to an agenda item outside of the public hearing." Avoid them. You may receive them, and this is your positive responsibility then. "You shall inform persons contacting you to make their information or objections known at the public hearing," and that's the proper way of dealing with it. Say Commissioner Number Four receives a phone call and says, "You know, I own that ranch where I've made the application for a four-lot subdivision, and I want to talk to you about it because I've got some problems with it." Stop. Please make those known at the hearing. You will have an opportunity to present that. You can do it in writing, you can do it in person, you can do it both ways, but please do it there so that my other commissioners have an opportunity to hear this as well. I know it's important for you, but please do that. And you are to avoid personal contacts. If you know Rancher A has that issue there, it would not be wise for you to engage in a conversation with them either at the golf course or at the driving range or whatever the case might be where you bump into them, to avoid those contacts, correspondence, and telephone calls, so that even if it's a casual conversation, it could spill into substantive issues there. So, please be aware that this is what the Board's resolution for guiding public hearings is about. Any member of a hearing body who has... Now, we get into this question, okay? What if I do receive this, okay? All right? Sometimes, I just can't avoid it. They stop me at Safeway, and they just tell me everything that's going on, okay? Any member of a hearing body who has received evidence outside the public hearing? And, okay, this may happen. They catch you at the meat counter, and you're choosing between ossobuco or the veal chop, and you're saying... And then, they catch you there, and they go, "Let's talk..." I mean, they just unload. So, you've just received evidence outside the public hearing. Or, you may have viewed the subject property. I know this area. I've driven through that valley thousands of times. I know that ranch, I know that tree, I know that creek, okay? Or, I'm just familiar with the subject property because I live next door, or because I've gone over to this place and had barbecue dinners before. So, any member of a hearing body who has any of these situations that gives them evidence outside the public hearing about that matter, what are you to do there? You shall disclose it at the hearing. And we do that regularly. We have a script that the Chair of the Commission reads that prior to any receipt of evidence, and this is right after the staff gives its presentation, disclosures are requested of each and every commissioner. Do you or have you received evidence outside the public hearing, viewed the subject property or are familiar with it? Please disclose it so that people know what you know about that project that may not be contained in the staff report or the evidence that's going to come before you. You shall disclose it at the hearing, and you'll disclose what evidence you know, what your observations are, and what your familiarity with that property is. And that's what you are to disclose, and that is to be done very carefully and fully so that everybody knows. So, to what degree is this disclosure required, okay? So, I'll just say, "Yeah, I used to work in the area, and I've driven by it 100 times." Is that sufficient? The sufficiency of that disclosure is also guided by the resolution as such, so that all interested persons may be aware of the information, evidence, and familiarity upon which the board members rely, okay? You just can't erase that information from your knowledge, and so, they need to know how familiar you are, what evidence you have, and how you're relying upon that, so that they have an opportunity to respond to that information or evidence. If they know that your observations are faulty or they may not be complete, they have an opportunity to ask you about that. Well, what did you see? And that is afforded to parties that come before you on these matters, and you need to give them the opportunity to respond, to know that information, familiarity with the evidence that you're relying upon. How does my use of obtaining of evidence or information outside the public hearing affect the fairness of that public hearing? There's a case called Safeway Stores versus City of Burlingame, and let me just read you a key portion of that case. I'm concerned, you know, I understand, Mr. Malter, you don't want things always read to you, but this is really quite good here. We come next to the question, this is reading right from the case. "We come next to the question whether a fair hearing was accorded by the city council in this case. True it is that the council received for the record the written protests of the opponents and heard their oral protests, but in addition, the members of the council, either individually or collectively, viewed the locale and conferred with petitioners or their representatives, thereby receiving so-called facts upon which they apparently relied in coming to their judgment. These so-called facts gleaned by them through observation and hearsay were not recited at all in the record and consequently were unknown to the opponents and hence could not be met or overcome by them. Under those circumstances, can it be said that a fair hearing was had? We think not," says the court. It says, "In those cases, the judgment of a councilman must be based on real facts and not on the conclusions of others, such as, for instance, the petitioners. Until such facts resting in the minds of the councilmen are presented in the record, the objectors have no means of knowing on what facts the judgment rests so as to enable them to controvert them, to question them, or to add to them. In the instant case, the city relies in the final analysis, not on the real facts showing the benefit of the property and the requirements of it, but rather on the unknown factors which give rise to the judgments which were locked up in the minds of the councilmen and not disclosed at the council." And so, that is the state of the law. That case is law and has not been controverted by any cases that followed after. It's a 1959 case. Clearly, it says that what you know up here must be disclosed and in the record. Goes back to my very first point about making findings on the substantiality of the record. And if that record is going to be substantial, it must include all the information upon which that decision was based. If a decision is based on information that's not in the record, council cannot cite to that information in support of that decision, having one leg cut from underneath you in a court of law. Now, well, you're going to say, "Well, how about site visits? Can I visit a site? What is that?" It's been asked of county council recently, "Is there a law against visiting a site?" No, there isn't. There's no law against visiting a site. But there is guidance within the resolution to visit a site, and it talks about visiting the site as a hearing body. You may take field trips to view the property for purposes of the hearing. The field trips are taken as a regular meeting. Again, notice, Brown Act. Interested persons will have an opportunity to present and to be present and view the property and hear what the planning commissioners are hearing, if in fact, they take that field trip. Again, this whole idea of knowing what the decision-makers know so that they can rebut it. Finally, a record of that field trip will be entered into the minutes so that it is part of the evidence that the Planning Commission does consider as a part of its decision-making. So, site visits and field investigations is covered by the resolution. Again, it's as a group. Now, how do we deal with this whole thing about individual site visits? Gathering, soliciting, obtaining, and researching or investigating of evidence, information, or data about a subject property, property owner, or land use outside of the public hearing? What is the collective opinion of the county council with regards to that? And that happens oftentimes either in your own living room with the proliferation of electronic search tools. Anybody who is familiar with certain things can do Google Earth and use Zillow and go on there, and I get a really good picture of that property through doing that, or I receive information from a number of, a variety of means. What about that type of investigation? What about that type of quote-unquote "virtual" site visit? If it's done outside of a public hearing, the collective wisdom of county council's office is one, don't do it. But if you do do it, and again, like I said, there's no law that prohibits this type of investigation or site visit, but if you do do it, you must disclose it to the extent that is required by the resolution itself, and it has to be... And it has to be such that the parties who are appearing before you know exactly what you know, have what you have, so that they can analyze it, question it, or rebut it as a part of their presentation. So, my advice is, don't do it, but if you do, be prepared to disclose all of what you did in that investigation or in that site visit, or in that receipt of any information outside of the public hearing. Anyone who has gone to a coastal commission hearing sees the length with which commissioners on that board have to disclose in writing as well as orally, all the contacts that they have received as a part on that particular public hearing. It is done routinely at the California Air Resources Board as well, about any contacts, any information that is not contained in the record, to disclose that and to make it known to the other sides. So I hope that that answers Commissioner Molitor's question about whether or not it's illegal to do a site visit. There is no law prohibiting it, but again, you are governed. Your actions are governed by a resolution that has been adopted by the board supervisors, clearly understanding where case law is going, clearly understanding what the government code is requiring, clearly understanding what due process requirements are required of an agency. So keep those things in mind when you say, "Well, you're not prohibiting it, there's no line in the resolution that says you shall not do a site visit." Doesn't say that, but it does say, bear in mind, these are due process type of issues here, and they rise to a very high level when it comes to the law. So I would advise you to take that seriously and not to do it, but if you do, to disclose it fully to the extent required by the resolution and by law. Finally, I'm going to go through these last two slides very quickly. The board supervisors has an administrative policy manual identifying conflicts of interest, the main one here being a conflict of interest with regard to contracts. That really doesn't so much apply in your case, but know that Government Code Section ten ninety is reflected in this major prohibition not to be financially interested in any contracts or purchases. Disqualification per the Political Reform Act, public official may not participate in a matter in which he or she has a material financial slash economic interest. Well, that could happen in the case of a planning commission. Let's say you own property that may increase in value as a result of a decision that comes before you. There's a whole eight-step process involved here, and it's much longer and much more detailed than I can cover in these short moments, but know that it is a serious issue and it should not be taken lightly. Please be concerned about your financial interests and matters becoming before you, and county council can assist you in that eight-step analysis. The FPPC, Parapolitical Practice Commission, has a wonderful hotline that you can contact to ask about your particular situation, and they can guide you through that. So that concludes my presentation, and be more than happy to take any questions if we still have time for that.
Just one, Robert. Any other questions? We've had situations come up where we've had projects brought before the commission and in our packets, it's been a consolidation of operations. This is the example I'm thinking of, both within the county and bringing an operation from out of county into the county. And although we might have maps, even aerials of the local property, we don't have anything on the out-of-county property. Is, how do we handle that, or would you recommend that we contact staff and ask them for some sort of supplemental information on that as far as mapping? And I'm thinking of a Google situation, obviously.
Right. In that situation where, let's say, you have received your planning commission package and you're flipping through it in preparation for your hearing and you notice something, "Well, you know, this is not as much information as I want. I have a question." Yes, you can contact staff, and staff will go ahead and do that investigation and provide that information as a supplement to that.
Thank you. Mr. Elston.
Is there a burden of proof as such? Are we talking about a rational basis for a decision that's supported by evidence in these hearings?
It's usually a rational basis. The substantial evidence test as opposed to an independent review, that's kind of the standard that most courts will go through. They'll only go through an independent review type of a test, which is much higher scrutiny if there is a serious issue or right involved, or vested right involved. In this case, their case law is saying that you don't, you don't have a vested right in a CUP, so it's mostly a substantial burden or substantial evidence test that you're going to weigh these findings upon.
Thank you, sir.
You want me to translate that for you? Where'd you get it? Two lawyers talking.
It's just the standard of review in which a court will go through the case analysis, okay? And again, you know, county council is available to answer specific questions that you may have about specific situations, and they come up from time to time in the hearing room, and we try to deal with them as best we can. All right?
Robert, just for the new commissioner, any contact with staff is not considered ex parte outside, correct?
This is your staff. They're assisting you in your, in the conduct of your business, and so, and again, see staff as your eyes and ears. They're the experts in this area. They have their fingertips on all the relevant information, and if they don't, I'm sure that they can proceed and find it for you and make it a, make it a part of the record for the public and all the participants to see.
Thank you. That brings us to item eleven, a presentation of resolution honoring Commissioner Bill Bartels for his service. I'll come down, and Bill, if you could come up.
Why is Richard bringing down the chrome bracelets, Bill?
I think I may have pushed disclosure from time to time by living in the county.
Congratulations. I'm not going to go through all the whereises, but just a few. This is a resolution of the county planning commission honoring your years of service from January seventh nineteen ninety-seven through May fourth, two thousand and nine. Whereas Bill Bartels was recommended to Ventura County Planning Commission by Supervisor Kathy Long of the third district, and was appointed by the board supervisors on January seventh nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas Bill has served as the chair and vice-chair of the planning commission on numerous occasions, and whereas Bill's tenure as chair was notable for both his patience and general approach to dealing with the speakers, which greatly facilitated public participation on difficult land use issues. And whereas some of the more significant items heard by the planning commission included the Ronald Reagan Library Edition, the Amison Ranch Grinds Grade Mines, the greenhouse projects, general plan updates, and others too numerous to mention. And whereas Bill has served on the district, the third district, which includes communities of Camrio, Cal State, Channel Islands, City of Port wine Navy, southeast Oxnard, Oxnard, Plains, Santa Paula, Fillmore, Piru, Lockwood, eastern portion of Naval Base Ventura County, and the Port wine Navy, and the entire county in general. I can understand why you're leaving. It's hard. And whereas serving as a planning commissioner has inspired Bill to even greater heights of civil service to the benefit of and fortune of the city of Fillmore, now therefore be resolved that the Ventura County Planning Commission hereby honors Bill Bartels for twelve years of dedicated public service on the Ventura County Planning Commission's and sincerely thanks him for his hard work and leadership, patience, good humor, and thoughtful decision-making. Adopted on this fourteenth day of May, two thousand and nine. While I step up, I'll let the commissioners make comment, and then we'll give it to you.
Oh, I'll start. It's been my pleasure to serve not only with Bill but his incredibly attractive wife. I still haven't figured that part out, but you must be a hell of a salesman. I even knew Bill before children kind of situation, so. But professionally and personally, I've just admired and respected this man from day one. As was stated in the resolution, his professionalism, but also his ability to calmly and rationally get to points, even though there was discord both in the room but up here. And because of you, Bill, I think there was always that calm, we'll agree to disagree, but let's do what's best for the county of Ventura. And I want to personally thank you for bringing that to the table, and I just wish you all the best.
Commissioner Molitor.
I too appreciate your service and your integrity. I've enjoyed watching your thinking process. When a question would be asked or when you were going to speak, you'd stop a minute and think, and then I'd kind of be glued on you. How's this going to go? And then you'd start out, and it reminds me when I was in Australia and I threw my first boomerang. You'd start out and I'm watching and you're going like this, and you're going out and you're making your point, and then all of a sudden, everything comes back home, and I completely understood where you were going and how you got there, and that benefited me. So thank you, Bill, for that process.
Commissioner Dubus.
You'll be missed.
Commissioner Elston.
Well, I've had the extreme good fortune of knowing the Bartels family for thirty or forty years, representing grandparents and parents. I can't think of a better person to take up the gauntlet in Fillmore, and I wish you
I would merely say, Bill, that I've enjoyed the short time I've been here working with you. I've looked to you for the guidance that I've needed. You've always made me feel very comfortable and allowed me to casually or easily slide into the position without a lot of disruption on the commission, and I certainly appreciate your friendship over these years, and I hope we keep seeing each other. I know that having been experienced with the city of Fillmore, it's kind of like jumping out of the frying pan into the fire, but wish you all the best over there. And if you have anything you'd like to say?
Just, I know I talked a lot today that I decided to stop. When Johnny Carlisle went off this commission many years ago, he said quietly, he came on to make change and went off because he understood that he was a piece of the process. My kid on the head, getting to excellence is not an end result, it is an ongoing process, and to have been a part of this amazing crew, who is you, was an honor and a privilege. But I think more importantly, to have very, very diverse and divergent points of view come together over and over and over again and craft the solution instead of crafting a divisive measure, and that takes time and it takes energy, and that has been the biggest gift for being on the commission and the staff. So, thank you all.
The last thing I have on the agenda is discussion items. Kim, anything?
I think you guys have had enough for me today. But I do want to thank the staff for their good work and Robert for his presentation. I think that was, that was very helpful, and I do want to say a few words about Bill also. He's been here ever since that I've been here. He has been a very steady hand on this commission, something that I've appreciated being before him. He's always been very complimentary to staff, whether he agreed with this or not, and I really, really appreciate that, and you will be missed.
With that said, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in honor of Commissioner Bill Bartels' retirement. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.